March 30th, 2001, Paul Coburg's Maintenance Worker Six Position had been reclassified to a Trades Worker on Trades Worker One. On July 18th, 2008, Paul Coburg then was transferred to the Equipment Operator Two Position within Road and Bridge Division, which is a position which is continued in until his retirement. Whereas Paul Coburg has served this county and the public with distinction and selflessness, he has gained the respect and admiration of his colleagues, coworkers, and citizens within the county, and his work is greatly appreciated. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board applauds Paul Coburg's efforts on behalf of the county and of the Board wishes to express their appreciation for the dedicated service that he has given to Indian River County for the last 25 years. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners and staff extend a heartfelt wishes for the success in his future endeavors, duly adopted this 26th day of March 2021, which I have signed by hand.
Thank you.
Well, Paul, I don't think your access badge is gonna get you through many of the doors, so you're gonna have to carry this around.
I can do that.
Just show this at the door and anybody who doesn't know you, which I think there's maybe one or two people in the entire county, this will be your access badge.
Okay, I can do that.
Paul.
I enjoyed my time with the county. It was fun. It was tressing at times, you know, but, you know, I even got injured on the job 16 years ago, and everybody told me I was dumb for coming back, but unfortunately, I come from the old school. You're the man of the family. You get up, you go to work, and I did. I got up and came back to work, and I did my 16 years, and I got 25 in. It's time to retire. But I worked with a bunch of nice guys in the county. Everybody was real good. We had our times, you know, back and forth with each other, but it was good. But thank you very much. I enjoyed it.
Paul, I wanna personally thank you for the years that you've dedicated to this county and the experience that you showed me. See, when I first got here in Indian River County, there was this larger-than-life individual coming in and out of the gym. That was you.
Oh, yeah.
And from that point on, there were some firefighters that used to come in and in the Sheriff's Office gym, and I think, well, Suzanne, Suzanne used to come too, but they didn't take as well.
That stuff, amazing.
Yeah, yeah, I was working hard, and I think Chris Mara, y'all came down, and it was always a, always a pleasure to see you and talk a little bit about what was going on. And just reading off your career, you've just about done everything that was in the public works purveyance.
Yeah.
And I want to thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And please enjoy the future endeavor.
Oh, yeah, I hope so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, while Paul's dedication in his, in his efforts with the county road and bridge are without exception, I might tell you that, that Paul also volunteered a lot in the community. He helped the firefighters with the fair for many years. When I was out there, we'd be, do other events, he'd, he'd come and help us, because he, he was a part of the Sebastian Volunteers, and he kind of ended up being, being with us and and helped us a lot, and I'll never forget that. And I, I do remember that day. I wasn't on the call that you got injured, but I remember they told me in every, it spread around the fire station like wildfire. You all hear Paul got hurt and, and all that stuff, and I know everybody was, was very concerned about you and, and what you would do, but Paul's unwavering dedication to volunteer his time and stuff is, it really sticks out in my mind, and, and we became good friends, and Paul, I appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you, thank you. It wasn't my best day at work.
And that also explains why I, when I was with the Sheriff's Office, why I thought Paul was one of y'all. I thought it was, y'all getting there. I thought it was, I truly believed in the beginning that you were a firefighter.
Well, it was nice, because I know I worked with a bunch of paid guys there, and I was a volunteer, but they never treated me as a volunteer. They treated me as one as their own, so it was real good.
That's because you were dedicated and worked like, as if you weren't volunteering, that you were there and it was an assignment. You worked hard.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Paul, come on up. Up. Gotta cover under the galton, Paul.
Paul, do you want a picture, anything? Would you like a picture?
Nah, I'm good. Wanna go back out, please?
Now you gotta carry this the rest of the way.
Really?
You got a spot for it?
Yeah, right next to my plaque.
My gratification.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We don't blame ya.
Good man, Paul. Well, the next item on the agenda is a presentation for a proclamation honoring Willard Taylor Ramsey on his retirement from Indian River County Board of County Commissioners, Department of Emergency Service, Fire Rescue Division, with 30 years of service. I'm gonna call upon Commissioner Joe Irman to, to do that. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner.
All right, well, first of all, this is, this is a great honor, and it's a special for me, because I had Willard under my, under my command or tutelage, whatever you want to call it, for, for many years, and, and.
He showed you some good stuff.
He did.
He turned out pretty good despite that, right?
I'm glad he trained me. He did. But I, I can tell you, it was, it was always an honor and a pleasure, and you knew that, when Will was on the call, you knew everything was gonna be A-OK, so. Let me read this, and then I'll, then I'll, then I'll tell everybody all the secrets later when we get done, so. So, all right. Proclamation honoring Willard Taylor Ramsey upon the occasion of his retirement from Indian River County Emergency Services. Whereas Willard Ramsey began his journey as a firefighter within Indian River County on April 7th, 1991, and whereas Lieutenant Ramsey advanced through the fire service ranks, becoming an EMT, Smoke Diver, and Open Water Diver within his first year of service. Within the next five, he became a Driver Engineer, and by July 8th, 2003, after dedicating himself to the study and the practice of Incident Command, he was promoted to Lieutenant, in which capacity he has served until his retirement on March 30th, 2021. And whereas Lieutenant Ramsey's desire to learn is reflected by a file filled with certifications of expertise in urban search and rescue operations such as rope rescue, structural collapse, trench and evacuation, vehicle and machinery, as well as aerial operations and maintenance. And whereas Lieutenant Ramsey's passion for his crews and the citizens of Indian River County can be seen among the multitude of letters from the public, commendations from his supervisors, countless code saves, and especially in the positive demeanors and achievements of his many crew members he has mentored throughout the years. And whereas Lieutenant Ramsey's stellar career with the fire service has been based upon his sincere appreciation for those he has served below, beside, and above, inspiring those around him and to be and to do the very best they can for themselves, their crew, and the community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board is grateful to Lieutenant Ramsey for his 30 years of unwavering service, commitment, and dedication to his profession, his peers, and the citizens of Indian River County, adopted this 6th day of April 2021 and signed by all five county commissioners. So, now the, now the good stuff. Uh-oh. I remember the day Willard walked in the door, and he kinda looked like, he kinda looked like this guy here. Young and, and ready to go, and just ready to set the world on fire. Well, you can tell right away that, that in the, in the fire service or in anything, that you, you can train people, but you can't insert that desire that they have to succeed, and you could tell that, that Will was there. He had the desire, he had the drive, he had the fire in him, and you knew that, that he was gonna be involved, and he was gonna be here for a long time. And his, his career was, was stellar, and, and I can tell you that, that having Will under my command for many years was, was, was very comforting to know that when he was on the scene, you had a guy that was kind of a, kind of a jack-of-all-trades, master of some, not a master of all, but that's a fireman's credo. Where as a fireman, we, we are a jack-of-all-trades, but, but a master of none in a lot of cases, but Will had a special talent to, to fix and repair things and understand the mechanics of, say, electricity or, or plumbing or anything like that, or, or, or building structures, and it was very helpful on a scene to, to have that person that had that, had that knowledge. The other thing you don't know about Will, because of his expertise in fixing things, he was awesome at mechanics on cars and, and also repairing old cars and doing bodywork and all that sort of stuff. And some of his stuff you probably seen around town, old Jeeps with, with Army stuff on it, and, and things that he's done, and things that were pretty, pretty, pretty awesome when you, when you saw where they started and then where they finished, but that, that was on, on the side. But, but overall, his, his career in the fire service was, was, was a plus to this county. He's one of those guys that, and I've said, only say this about a few of them, and a couple of them have retired since then, that, that he was an asset to the fire service and also to this county, and if you were in a situation, he was one of the guys you wanted there to be, to be there to rescue, to help out. So, I could go on and on, and I can, I could tell you all some, some real fun stuff we had around the station with, with, we'd go by Will or Willard. He ended up being Willard most of the time, so, but we had a lot of fun, and, and it was, it was my honor to work with you.
Well, thank you, Captain.
Congratulations.
Of course, all of you know I'm Captain Irman. I was my captain for many, many years, so. But I guess it's my turn to talk. Oh. 30 years, where did it go? Grandpa said this was gonna happen. Didn't believe it at the time. Thank you to the commission for having me here today. Grandfather also told me that if you love your job, that you never really have to work a day in your life, you know? Doggone if he wasn't right. Being a farm boy from Indiana, you know, I never really thought that my life would turn out this, this good. It's just kinda weird that it's, it's, it's kinda over. But I wanna say a few things real quick. First of all, I wanted to thank my fiancee, Megan. It was maybe the last three and a half years of my life. Wonderful place. I love you, Megan. The Chief Stone and his administration. It's an honor to be able to retire under his administration. I'd follow that man into battle anywhere. It's been, it's been a good time. Few more thanks. Henry Losi, Captain Harrington, Scott Harrington, Kevin Slade, Kevin Gibbons, Rod Johnston. These are all people that I, and firemen that I grew up with learning from, learning all the things that Joe was talking about. In this profession, and even like with police officers, there's, failure's really not an option. Any other kind of profession or job that you're doing, and, you know, if you get tired or things don't work out well, you can throw your pen down or throw your hammer down for the day and say, "I'm done," or it's gonna do this tomorrow. But in this job, you, you can't. You've gotta do what you've gotta do. And so, learning under those guys, and it's also in a period of time where, you know, in today's world, everybody gets a trophy, you know, so you gotta, gotta hold people's hands and be PC and say the right things and be nice, but in those days, whether it was on scene or back at the station, choice words were given, and you learned very quickly. And I am proud and honored to be able to be in that time and that day of the fire service, to be able to be told in a certain way, to learn very quickly and be a little more abrupt. I know the world's changing, and I know it's a different world, and I know a lot of things need to change, and I'm doing my best, especially with computers and electronics, to change with them. Like Captain said, I've been driving old cars and old things with no electronic fuel injection, mostly points, but some of you guys know what I'm talking about. Really didn't come up here with anything really to say. This is all off the hip, so excuse me. Someone asked me earlier, "What am I gonna do?" So, I've got things to do. I've already joined the Volunteer Fire Department. I've been a field training officer for many, many years, and I love training kids, and as Megan can attest to it, wasn't too long ago, just even at the grocery store, I'm recruiting firemen who I think that would be a good fireman, saying, "Hey, come on over. What are you doing this for the rest of your life?" So, also, I've, not to get political on you, but this always comes up just a little bit. I'll, I'll be easy. I've enjoyed my career. I loved it, and the last couple of years, last 10 or 15 years, we've, we've, we lose over 30 or so firefighters every year to other counties and to other places, and as a field training officer, training them and doing the things with them and wanting to keep them here, I end up losing them to other counties. I feel that there's really two things of why. First of all, I think we need to be more competitive in the market of, of pay and some other things, but that's, that's another deal. But what I'd love to do, and I've already talked to a county commissioner about it, and just off the record, I'd like to be able to be a part and start our Explorer program. The Sheriff's Department has done very well with this for many, many years, being able to get these kids out of high school and get them interested in something, get with their counselors, and I think if we can get more and more of these folks that live in our community, that have families here, instead of gathering other people from other counties and training them to go back to their counties after we've trained them, I'd love to be able to do that, and I'm hoping to be able to get with you guys here very soon and talk about this and find out all the logistics, 'cause I'm just as raw and at this as anybody. So, I'm hoping to get with the Sheriff's Department, with their person who does the Explorer program, find out what works for them. I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but I'd love to be a part of that. And another thing I'd love to do too, just to throw this out there, I've been watching a lot of things on TV lately, and a lot of people that are underprivileged, there's a lot of good people out there and good kids that have grown up in the foster care system and have not had families. I came down here and my family without a family, and the fire department gave me that family. I'd love to be able to try to sponsor either through the Volunteers, the Association from our union, and help with the county, to be able to sponsor one foster child or foster kid who's graduated from high school to do the same thing with the Explorer program, to give them the family they've never had, and send them to be able to go to EMT school, fire school, and have them come work for us. I can't think of anything better for the community to be able to do something like that as well, so. There's a few things that I was asked of what I'm gonna do, so I'm not really leaving. I love Vero Beach. I love my community, and I plan on staying here other than doing a lot of traveling, you know, and my future wife and my dogs. Well, that's about it. Thanks again for a wonderful 30 years. I really don't think I would change a thing if I had to start all over again. I really don't. Thanks for your time.
Awesome. Will, I have to say, it was probably one of the most profound buys for now that I've ever heard in my 15 years up here. You, you throughout your career, you were a man of commitment and dedication that was a prime example for others, and that's what you're relaying now, that you want to continue to be, that example through tutelage. I never had the opportunity for you to work for you or for you to work for me, but working with you was absolutely marvelous. When you got on the scene of a critical incident, it was going the right way. The best it could be was because you were there, and I want you to know personally, I appreciate that. There's a lot of incidents, I guess we can talk of, of specific incidents, but that was about 20 years ago. But knowing that, when, when you got to the scene, it was in control. There's some people in the back of the room too that we responded with, and you were on that same truck with them, with the exception of the chief. Chief, you know, you weren't here then. But it's nice to see that your colleagues are here in support of your separation from the agency. I, I think it's a great testament, and I want to thank you. I also want to add that, Will, you, you didn't mention anything about the hot tub, the swimming pool, the RV. You mentioned continued dedication to your work, your career, and the future of the career through others, which is, it's awesome. But Will does have all those other things too, and I hope you get a chance to enjoy them.
Every night.
Work them in a little bit.
May I say something?
Yes.
I just wanted to thank you so much for your service. I didn't, I didn't have the pleasure to know you during your career, but what you just said is so inspiring. Thank you so much, and I hope the ideas will come to fruition, and I'm sure we'd be happy to support you in that. Thank you.
Will, thank you for your service. You know, you've, you've dedicated your, your lifetime to, to this profession and to the citizens of Indian River County, and on the Explorer thing, as we had a good conversation on that a little while back, I definitely think that's something that, that we want to explore, so, you know, you're, you're, you're going for now, but I don't think we're done with you yet, so just definitely wanna, wanna work, work with you on, on doing some of the things that you talked about for, for bringing new, new folks into the, to the service in Indian River County. So, and thank you for your commitment to.
Finding my checks.
Yeah. He signs them over there, but he's, we just sent them over to him. But, yeah, and, and thank you, you know, and that natural, you know, just the FTO, you know, through and through, that you want to just continue teaching and teaching other people even, even after you're retired, that commitment is just, just above and beyond the, the call of duty and everything, so it's, it's greatly appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you, Will. Anybody, anybody?
Get your rod down here.
Anybody you wish, yeah.
Don't be shy.
Now that's a picture, Jim.
Pretend like you like him.
Sit down.
Yeah.
Is that what Dylan?
Chief said he wanted your mask to go higher, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, like this? Is that better, chief?
Congratulations.
And thicker?
Most definitely. I look forward to it.
Good man. All right, John. The next item on the agenda is a presentation of proclamation designating the month of April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We will call upon Commissioner Adams to do the honors, and I understand we have several recipients. We have one that's online. No, we don't? Okay. And so we, our intended recipients were Joe Walsh, Matt Markley, and we'll turn it over to Commissioner Adams.
Thank you, and if there's anybody else here, I know we have several proclamations to hand out, please come on up, and I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, then give each group the opportunity to, to say something. So, it is my pleasure to read a proclamation designating the month of April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas, child abuse and neglect is a serious and growing problem affecting more than 3.2 million of our nation's children annually and over 3,500 children locally. And whereas, the abuse and neglect of children can cause severe, costly, and lifelong problems, including physical and mental health problems, school failure, and criminal behavior, which affects all of society. And whereas, increased public awareness of the devastating problem of child abuse and neglect is our strongest weapon in the fight to end it. And whereas, many community organizations, such as all the exchange clubs in Indian River County, the Exchange Club of Indian River, the Exchange Club of the Treasure Coast, the Exchange Club of Vero Beach, the Exchange Club of Felsmere, and the Exchange Club of Sebastian, Hibiscus Children's Center, and other organizations who make children a top priority, take action to support the physical, social, emotional, and educational development and competency of all children. And whereas, during the month of April, Prevent Child Abuse Florida, in collaboration with the Governor's Office of Adoption and Child Protection, the Florida Department of Children and Families, and the Ounce of Prevention Fund of Florida, will implement Pin Wheels for Prevention, a statewide campaign promoting awareness of healthy child development and positive parenting practices. The National Exchange Club will honor all children by wearing blue on Mondays during the month of April. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners that the month of April 2021 be designated as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Indian River County, and all residents are urged to engage in activities whose purpose is to strengthen families and communities to provide the optimal environment for healthy child development. Adopted the 6th day of April 2021 and signed by all five county commissioners. And first, I'd like to thank all of you for all the work you're doing to raise awareness and prevention of child abuse in our community. It is a worthy goal, and I know something that you guys have worked on for years and years, so I'd like to give you the opportunity to, to say a few words about that.
Well, thank you for allowing us to join you today and for the proclamation proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Our national group is proclaimed Child Abuse Month of April in 1979. Our clubs hold fundraising initiatives throughout the county to provide funds to nonprofits in the county that address child abuse prevention. This year, we're bringing more awareness to the community about child abuse in Florida and have sponsored signs at the entryways. You may have seen them. They have a blue ribbon on them. There are about six locations coming into the county, and we've also sponsored the memory field. There are 82 flags in the memory field, and each flag has the name and the date of the death of the child on the flag. In the past, we've put up over 200 flags. The number in Florida has come down as more effort has been focused on prevention. Our goal is to put up no flags. The flags are currently at Riverview Park in Sebastian on US 1, and they'll move to St. Helen's on 20th Street on April the 17th. Thank you for allowing us to join you this morning and for the proclamation. I'm joined by people from all the clubs. I think I have some people on Zoom. I got that forum yesterday.
Me and Segal, Nick.
Yeah, one of the things that we have worked on is getting our clubs, and when I talked to Lars, she said, "Well, the pandemic has affected so many things." One of the things we worked on was just getting our clubs back to start meeting. We knew we couldn't do all of our fundraising projects, but we use Zoom, we've used in-person. Zoom and in-person, we're good at it. But thank you.
Wonderful. Anybody else?
Why don't you all introduce yourselves and what club you're with, just for the record?
Lori Collings, I'm with the Exchange Club of the Treasure Coast, and I'm also the District Director this year for Florida.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
Kim Prado, I'm with the Treasure Coast Exchange Club. I'm also the VP Regional, so I cover Alabama, Puerto Rico, and Florida.
Wonderful.
I'm Judy Landgrave. I'm with the Vero Beach Exchange Club, and I'm also the Vice President of Awards for the District.
Awesome.
I'm Barbara Parent. I'm President of the Exchange Club of Indian River.
And I'm Robin Dapp. I'm the President of the Exchange Club of the Treasure Coast.
I'm Matt Markley. They wouldn't allow me in the club.
What club do you want to join?
Yeah, any of us.
We'll make that happen.
If you know anyone that would be interested in joining us, have them contact us, because we're always working for new members. And I didn't tell you, I'm the President-elect for the Florida District.
Awesome.
And I'm a member of the Treasure Coast Club.
All right.
Thank you.
Did you want to say something? Go right ahead.
Good morning. May I take off my mask? I'm like your family dog. I've had my shots. I'm Matt Markley, CEO of Hibiscus Children's Center. I want to echo what Joe said. Good morning to the commissioners, and thank you very much for allowing us to be part of your meeting today to acknowledge Child Abuse Prevention Month. We appreciate your hospitality. I want to talk to you, just, I think I have a half an hour, right? Is that what somebody told me? Talk about, talk about Hibiscus. I'll, I'll do it in less than. I'll do it in less than three minutes. Hibiscus Children's Center is a residential child welfare center operating on the Treasure Coast and Okeechobee since 1985. All of us in our society want desperately to end child abuse, as Joe talked about, but in the meantime, while we're working on that, kids have to be taken care of. That's where Hibiscus comes in. If a child is removed from his or her home because of abuse or neglect, in the state of Florida, the Department of Children and Families cannot find a placement for that child, they call Hibiscus. Now, they may call other agencies as well. I think they probably call Hibiscus first. No, I'm just kidding. But Hibiscus is open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We never close and are there if children need us. The agency operates two residential campuses on opposite ends of the Treasure Coast. Hibiscus Village here in Vera accepts children ages 13 to 17. Hibiscus Shelter in Jensen accepts children and infants and infants up to age 12. And even though there is an age demarcation, we don't want the older kids with the younger kids, you know, you can understand that, we make every effort to keep siblings together. We make family units, keep them together. That's our priority. Once on campus, a child may stay with us several weeks, months, or even years. Our staff are surrogate parents for more than 50 children every day of the year. Our primary job is the kid's safety. That's the first priority. But what I think we really do best is help kids imagine what a better life can be outside of their situation. Hibiscus employees have tremendous responsibility every day, and they really do a great job. I mentioned that Hibiscus is a child welfare agency, but it's much more than that. Hibiscus is also a community mental health provider. We have provided community outpatient mental health services for a number of years. We were recently certified by DCF to begin providing outpatient substance abuse services as well. Last year, Hibiscus served more than 800 children and families in our outpatient mental health services and onsite at the campuses as well, in the three counties that comprise the Treasure Coast and Okeechobee. A couple of programs I'd like to mention, a final program I'd like to mention is, it's near and dear to my heart, is a program here in Indian River County. It's called Career Pathways to Independence. You may have heard of that. So, what we do is, we bring the kids in, every kid that comes onto the village, we give them a career assessment. We find out what they might be interested in, okay? And then, from there, we assess their skills. We have a coordinator who does this. We assess their skills. We give them opportunities to have internships with local businesses in the community, and they have part-time jobs, because what we're trying to do is make sure kids have a better life once they leave. They can imagine a better life and demand a better life, and obviously, working, going to college is going to help them have a better life. But the Career Pathways program has another component, that's an educational liaison. So, we have a full-time liaison with the Indian River County School District to make sure kids do their homework. If they have an IEP, make sure it's followed. If they want to go to college, a lot of kids want to go to college, we help them with their applications, we help them with their FAFSA applications. We do everything for them that you would have done or do for your children. That's because we're their surrogate parents. So, I just wanted to leave you with our unofficial, I talked almost three minutes here, I want to leave you with our unofficial motto, that is, every day, every child, for a better tomorrow. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Come on up. Thank you. Hey, what's going on, Robin?
How are you?
Hello, I think I have a proclamation for each exchange club.
Great job. Great job.
I have a bunch of them.
Get one more in there. There you go. Now, we got it. Everybody's got something.
All right.
All right.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you for our future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody wrote their pen.
That's for you.
That was for me?
Yeah.
Wish you bring something. All right, next item on the agenda, we have the traditional minutes up for approval, regular meeting for January 19, 2021, the regular meeting, special call meeting of January 25, 2021, and the regular meeting of February 2, 2021.
May I have approval?
Second. That's a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Airman. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. On information items. Commissioner Airman?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, under 7A, we just honored Will Ramsey, who, in my book, is one of our superheroes, but not to go unnoticed, and is this one right here, is Terry Brennan. Terry just decided not to, she didn't want to come to get her proclamation here, and I know as Commissioner Fleischer, Chairman Fleischer, has eloquently said, that's what some people choose to do, and that's okay, because we still know how important they were. And I can tell you that I wish Terry would have been here today, because Terry was one of the first female firefighters, along with one we honored last month or so, Peggy Parmenter and Babette Flanagan. They were, they came into a time when, you know, it was all, it was all a male institution, and Terry has been made 30 years, and that's to be commended. And Terry was one of those that also did a great job, and was consistent in what she did, and just added to the whole atmosphere of the fire service. She was one of the first females to work out of rank as an officer, and that's also a pretty big deal when it comes to the fire service, when you first get to do that. But I just thought we needed to take the time to thank Terry for the pass that she created for other female firefighters and the great job that she did, and I wish she would have been here, but she was a darn good firefighter, a darn good person. So, thank you, Terry.
Thank you. Is there anything else on informational items?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I understand we need to pull item 8F Foxtrot for further clarification by the author. So, we'll be pulling 8F. Is there anything?
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to pull item 8L and 8V.
8L and 8V.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to discuss 8J.
8J Juliette?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything further, commissioners? Is there anybody attending that wishes to have anything pulled from the consent for further clarification or discussion?
May I have consent as amended?
Second.
Upon motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Vice Chairman O'Brien. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Well, we'll begin with the first item that was polled, item 8F Foxtrot for... Mr. Jeff Smith, clerk of the court.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, this is the annual presentation of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and also the Popular Annual Financial Report, which I laid a copy on the dais for each one of you. First of all, the audit went clean. This is 400 and some odd page annual financial report that we produce. I want to thank Beth Powell, especially for all the pictures that we used on the front of the CAFR this year. You'll see the Jones Pier, the Oyster Bar Marsh Observation Center, our observation point, Junkwood Trail, and the lagoon. And so, we want to especially thank Beth Powell for providing those pictures for us to do. I want to thank your staff, led by Kristin Daniels, the constitutional officers, and my staff, led by Alyssa Nagy, the Director of Finance, she's right here, and Rayanne Coen, my senior accountant, Michelle Adams, my staff accountant, and of course, Laura MacGyver, who is my HR director, but also my creative person, because she created all the things here in the PAFR, so. We are submitting the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the Government Finance Officers Association Annual Certificate in Excellence in Financial Reporting. We've had that certificate 38 straight years, or 37 straight years. We're submitting it for the 38th year, and we're positive that we're going to get that. So, anytime you want to come up to my office upstairs, you can see all the plaques for the 38 years up there. But more importantly, I want to go through the PAFR, and I think this is, in layman's terms, what really goes on with the finances in the county. And so, I'm going to go through that pretty quickly here for you. The first few pages are self-explanatory. It defines the county, when it was created in 1925. And the next page, on page four and five, is a picture of all of you and all five of the constitutional officers. It also explains the budget process, the due dates of when the particular areas of the county need to have their budgets done, and there's a map there of your particular districts, and we've got it updated for all the new commissioners and the new constitutionals. The next page is one I'd like to highlight, pages six and seven, which are major initiatives that the county took on this past fiscal year and those that, major accomplishments that were finished. Obviously, you know, the big one out there at State Road 60 and 43rd Avenue intersection, that was undertaken during the fiscal year. The FDOT and the county have agreed to equally share in the cost of that reconstruction out there. I wanted to highlight that, the 45th Street beautification project and the countywide meter replacement for the utilities department, all paid for in cash, and that's currently ongoing. We've not had to borrow any money for any of these projects, which is a good thing. On the other side, we accomplished completing the landfill, Segment 3, Cell 2 expansion, and the Segment 2 partial closure. We are required to escrow that money, so we paid, we are paying for all that in cash as well. The state requires us to have a report from an engineer stating that we are properly escrowing those funds to pay for future closure costs of the landfill, and we do that, and that's why we have the money available to pay this when it happens, again, without borrowing any money. You'll also notice that we completed the Vera Lake Estates paving from 101st Avenue to 96th Avenue. I'm sure the residents up there appreciate that. We also completed the Section 5 beach restoration, bringing in a lot of sand, 123,800 cubic yards of sand to replace the damages done by Hurricane Matthew, Hurricane Irma, and Hurricane Dorian. So, that's some of the major accomplishments done, and you'll see a picture of the beautiful beach in Vera Beach there. The next page is really, pages eight and nine are really important, I think, because if you'll see on the chart on the left where it says principal employers, and then on the right, principal taxpayers, there's three entities that show up on both charts. Sebastian River Medical Center, Johns Island, and Indian River State show up as three of the top 10 major employers in the county. They also show up as three of the top 10 principal taxpayers in the county. Johns Island coming in third, Adult Communities, which is Indian River State's fifth, and MPT is Sebastian Stewart, which is the Sebastian Medical Center coming in eighth. So, it shows you how important those entities are to the economy and the employment of the county. 2019-20 was a mixed bag results. Due to the pandemic, had a big effect on that. We saw real estate values go up quite a bit, which produced an increase in property taxes. We also saw a negative decrease in building permits during that time, and that was obviously due to the pandemic, and also an increase in unemployment because of the pandemic. But we also saw an increase in production of citrus, so it was a mixed bag this year. We placed eighth in the state as far as citrus production due to our increase. But you'll see down at the bottom of page eight that the unemployment rate ended up being 5.9% at September 30, and it was much higher during the pandemic. But you can see that we rebounded a lot more quickly during, after the pandemic in employment than we did during the Great Recession. It took us a while to get back to decent employment after the Great Recession, but we rebounded pretty quickly after the pandemic. So, that shows you the resiliency of the county and how well it's run financially, and that's kudos to all of you. On the opposite page there, I'd like to include this. This is just a bare bones example of what the breakdown of a dollar bill, of each dollar of taxes goes to. Now, this is taken without exemption, so it's, like I said, a bare bones example, but the interesting point there is that you can see that your operations only take 25% of each dollar of taxes that a taxpayer pays in this county. Almost 50% of it goes to the school district, and then the rest of it is broken down between EMS and the special districts that we collect taxes for. So, again, the county is a well-run county that's a testament to Kristin and to Jason and how they run, fiscally run the county, and I just like to show that so that people can see how the tax, your tax dollar is broken down. On the next page, I want to explain what government-wide financial statements means. That's everything. That's including the constitutional officers, the special, or the dependent districts, which is the solid waste disposal district and emergency services, and all of the departments underneath your auspices. It does not include entities like Sebastian River Taxing District or the Water Control Districts. Those are independent districts, and they're not included as part of Indian River County government-wide. But you'll see here that the net position for the county increased by 3.3% or $33 million, even though we had negative effects from the pandemic. We still increased our net position, which is excellent. The next page breaks it down even further into governmental funds, which are just the general fund of the county, the special revenue funds, and the capital projects funds. Those do not include the proprietary funds like utilities, or the golf course, or the shooting range, or the building department. Those are not included here, but you can see on the chart on the left that our revenues, even though the pandemic took a big bite out of everybody in the country, we still increased our revenues by a little over $8 million, and the biggest chunk of that was, again, property taxes. You'll see that some of the other areas either maintain themselves or decreased. Obviously, the interest rates go into zero, the Fed rate going to zero had a negative effect on our interest investment earnings, but still, we're making some money on some of the treasuries that we had bought prior to the pandemic that, you know, are still we're holding. And some of the, and on the right side, you'll see expenses, even though they went up almost $18 million, we still, in the general fund, we still increased our unrestricted fund balance by about $3 million. So, we're doing excellent as far as that's concerned. We have $56 million in our unrestricted fund balance in case something disastrous happens like another hurricane, like happened in 2004 and 2005, that completely destroyed a lot of infrastructure. We have the means to rebound quickly if that, in fact, does happen. We have the means to rebound quickly if that, in fact, does happen. Because of the way that our county is run financially, we have an excellent credit rating. And so pages 14 and 15 show you the fund balance trend for the general fund, and we ended up $59.1 million for the general fund total fund balance, of which, as I said, $56.2 million is unrestricted. So we have that available to use if we need to. Going on page 16 and 17, I'd like to highlight the pictures there that you see of our new courtroom, thanks to you all. Our new courtroom is up and running, and it is modern, up to date. It's got every technical advance that we can have in a courtroom, and it's very well-built. It was done by the same contractor that redid our North County offices up there in Sebastian. They were excellent to work with. So we put some pictures in here, and I'd like to highlight the one there down on the bottom of page 16 to the right. That's an elevator for a handicap judge. We're required to put that in because of ADA requirements. The other courtrooms don't have that because they were built prior to the requirement. But that's an elevator in case we ever do get a handicap judge. They can get up to their bench via the elevator. And infamously, I like the next page, the debt page, because it really shows you how well we're doing. We're down to $38 per capita debt in the county. This year, we paid off the limited general obligation note. We paid that off completely, and we've still only got the spring training bonds and the water and sewer note. That is due to be paid off by the end of September of 2022. So after that, we'll only have the spring training bonds left to pay down, and that will be paid off by 2031. So as of 2031, we will be debt-free. And you can see for the last 10 years how the debt per capita has come down each year, and that again is a testament to how well-run financially the county is by Jason and his And then the last page shows you cash and investments. We have investments in US agencies per our investment policy that you all have approved. You get to see those reports quarterly. We do have a lot of cash, but most of that is in interest-bearing accounts, although they're not making a lot of money at this point because of the drop in rates. But they are, it's not just idle cash sitting there, not earning anything. So it is making some revenue. And we have some in US treasuries and other market investments, local government investment pools, which pay a little bit more than what the banks are paying, but it's not substantially as the rates are not conducive to that. And you'll see there that the cash balance and investment balances has steadily increased for the last 10 years. And now, at September 30th, we were over $400 million total cash and investments. On the bottom of page 19, you'll see compliments of you all, the new juvenile and recording division on the first floor. This used to be the law library in the courthouse. We had to reconfigure that because now the law library is operating out of the main library, and most of that's done online now. So the need for a physical library has decreased. And so we re-appropriated that area for my juvenile division and a recording division, moved that off to the second floor so that we could create the eighth courtroom that you just saw a minute ago. So thank you for that. It's really working out well. In the far background of that picture, you can see the public area where people can come in and go through our, use the computer to look up property records and any public records that they're allowed to see. There's a free room there for them to use at their convenience. So again, thank you for everything you've done for the clerk's office and for the courthouse, and thank you for what you've done for the citizens of Indian River County.
Thank you, Jeff. And I don't know why so many people want to live here. Let's open it up.
May I say something?
Yeah, Jeff, again, awesome job. I love this thing. I think it's the best thing to give to the citizens. It's easy to read, easy to understand, tells them everything we're doing, and it's a pleasure to hand this out. Two things, I'm really excited that you got our new welcome signs on the front cover here. And kudos to Rich Spierka with Public Works for getting those done. I think those are just awesome for our community and really, very nicely done. On page 17, on the debt per capita, and this would just be for me, you don't need to change anything in this, but could you run those numbers and start with the population at 2011, and then run the debt based on that population number? Just kind of let me know where we are? Because part of it is, yeah, we've been paying down the debt, no doubt, but also the population's been going up. So to me, a cleaner measure would be if we fix the population at 2011, and how has that changed over time with the fixed population number? But again, that's just for my interest.
We can do that.
But, yeah.
We have the information in the CAFR. We can get that real quick.
Yeah, okay. Awesome, great. Again, awesome job, Jeff. Thank you. And I got my box full right here, Jeff. Already delivered them up front, so I'm ready to give those out. Thank you, Jeff.
I think it's your appreciation of the pictures, the photographs, because you don't ask for as many copies of the CAFR.
Yeah, right. A little tough to hand out, too.
A little heavier.
A little easier to read.
That reminds me, you can, any citizen can go onto my website and look at the CAFR. It's all on there. And this document that we just went over, it's online. You can view it online, the complete document, or online for anybody to look at anytime they want.
And we'll have the PAFR up in the office, other than what Vice Chairman O'Brien has, the distribution. It will be available here in the building as well. Thank you.
Mr. Parker, this is outstanding. It's easy to read. I prefer reading the bigger book, but, you know.
How many copies do you want?
But, no, no. Absolutely, this is outstanding. It's easy to read, it's easy to understand, and I just can't tell you how much that I appreciate what you and your office do. From the first day that I was elected, and the conversation you and I had since has just amazes me what all y'all do and what all y'all are responsible for, and you and your staff are to be congratulated on this. But this is great information. I might even get a few copies. I don't know if I'll need a whole box, but I may get there in time.
I've complimented Mr. Smith privately on this, but I wanted to commend you publicly. The first time I saw this, I was the mayor of the city of Vera Beach, and I was so impressed, and I still am. This is just a wonderful, for the community, this is what it looks like. It's the Popular Annual Financial Report. It's very easy to understand, and thank you so much for it. Much appreciated.
Jeff? Well, introduce your members of your staff here.
This is Alyssa Nagy, my finance director, and Rayanne Coen, my senior accountant, and Laura MacGyver is my HR director and the creator of the creative mind behind the Popular Annual Financial Report.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, commissioners, if there's no further questions or inquiries?
I'll make a motion to accept or approve. I don't know what the, to accept the PAFR. I'll second it.
That's a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You knew you were going to get a 5-0. It was a given. The next item that was pulled was item J. Juliette. Commissioner Moss?
Yes, thank you. I have a question about this. I know when we were discussing it, we didn't go into the background too much of the Agricultural Advisory Committee, so I researched it myself after that meeting. And in researching it, I noticed that we had five of the members who are strictly, and this is for the community now, five of the members were strictly agricultural. And there was one cattle representative, one citrus representative, one vegetable representative, one irrigation representative, and one horticulture representative. And that was when there was a total of seven. The other two were associated industry representatives. I don't have any objection to going to a total of nine members. My concern is diluting the agriculture portion of the Agriculture Advisory Committee, because with the new configuration, we would have only four actively involved in the agricultural industry. And that's, you know, four out of nine, you know, we wouldn't even have a majority that are actively involved in agriculture. So therein lies my concern with diluting it.
So I'll be happy to address that. For the past five years, we've only actually had four members on that committee. We've had one of those positions that has been open for five years of the five that you mentioned. So in order to get this more in line with other agricultural advisory committees throughout the state, in order to fill all of those positions, the current proposal that's in front of you has been proposed. Agraturism is at its heart agriculture. You have to be engaged in agriculture in order to be engaged in agraturism. So in fact, what is being proposed adds one more agricultural representative to the board, bringing four engaged in agriculture to engage in agraturism, which brings it from five to six. Then you have a Farm Bureau representative. That is very typical throughout the state. They have a lot of educational aspects to that organization, and bringing them on board would add to that voice on the committee. And then you remain with two industry associate representatives, which are also secondarily related to and involved in agriculture. For instance, the two industry-associated, or associated industry representatives currently, one is engaged in citrus research, and one is engaged in cattle. So all of the representatives on this committee are engaged in agriculture in one aspect or another. It's their involvement in the industries that might differ, similar to tourism, TDC, similar to EDC, and the different representatives that sit there. So I see this as actually adding to the agricultural voice on the committee versus taking away from it. And it will enable us to fill positions that have remained unfilled for many, many years.
So historically, then, was it the citrus portion of it that was vacant?
The citrus portion has been vacant for several years, but if you look at the makeup of the committee, many of those could go in either category. You have an irrigation category, you have a horticulture category, even one of the associated industries categories could actually fill a citrus role. So there's multiple people already on this committee that would remain on this committee that are engaged in the citrus industry. And I would imagine that once the agraturism is added, you'll have even more.
So you feel confident, then, that those five areas are represented, would be represented within the nine-member board?
I am confident that they're currently represented and will remain represented as we move forward.
Okay.
Thank you. And if there's no other questions, I'll be happy to move staff's recommendation.
Any further discussion? On motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Next item that was pulled was item 8L Lima.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, well, there's two parts to this item. One is to approve the amendment to the School District Indian River County Care Act agreement, which I'm perfectly fine with. The other part of the item is to designate the county administrator the authority to be able to make contract amendments without having to come back to the board. Basically, any change in the total dollar amount allocated would still come before the board, but in cases like this, if there's an agency or municipality and they want to move the money from one bucket to another, that Jason would have the authority to do that. Just so the public is clear, because we're talking, you know, tens of millions of dollars, this is not giving Jason a carte blanche to write checks everywhere. So any changes in the total allocation would still come before the board. This just gives Jason the authority to make inner agreement changes from bucket to bucket. And with that, if there's no questions, I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation.
Second. That was a motion by Vice Chairman O'Brien, seconded by Commissioner Airman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you for the clarification. Next item is 8V Victor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item deals with the town of Indian River Shores, and they are looking to work with our utility staff to do an exploratory study of the feasibility if the county would be so interested to provide water and sewer and wastewater services to the town. I'd like Dylan to just kind of summarize where we are from a legal point of view on this and what he recommends the county's position should be. And then I think there's some folks from Indian River Shores that might want to speak to this item as well. But go ahead and start with Dylan. If you could just give us a brief summary of some of the intricacies of this going forward.
Thank you very much. So first off, as you know, the town of Indian River Shores had approached county staff to discuss issues about potentially what their options would be if they were to decide to cancel or terminate their franchise agreement with the city of Vera Beach early. It's my understanding in their franchise agreement that there is a notice provision that if they were to provide notice, I think by maybe 2023, and I may not have the dates exactly right, that they would have a four-year notice provision roughly by which they would then be able to get out several years later. Thus, Indian River Shores would just simply understanding what their options were. I can tell you, I viewed this like with the city of Vera Beach when they approached us about moving their utility off the river and what their options would be in terms of doing some sort of agreement with the county. You know, our municipalities are also our constituents or our citizens of Indian River County. We were certainly supportive of taking the staff time and working with the city to understand what those options may be, what costs may be. He raised the issue relating to a 1989 franchise or agreement, which actually pertained back to a 1987 franchise agreement between the city of Vera Beach and Indian River County. The issue raised in that letter was whether we could, whether Indian River Shores could even be served by Indian River County based upon these agreements from 1989. I can tell you, back in 2012, although it's not directly on point, we had reached out to our outside counsel about the ability for the county to serve the South Barrier Island, so an area that is an unincorporated area. And our outside counsel's analysis of the laws of Florida, specific chapters adopted by the Florida Legislature back in the 50s, the agreement, estoppel principles and the like, was that no, after the termination of the county's franchise with the city, that the county could step in and serve the South Barrier Island. I can tell you that in 2017, the county's franchise agreement with the city of Vera Beach did expire. I kind of view the period since then as kind of as a holdover tenant, where we've been negotiating with the city of Vera Beach in good faith to extend that. Consistent with that opinion, I do not see where we are prohibited from serving this town of Indian River Shores at the expiration, but I will note, as the county administrator noted in the memo, we don't plan to insert ourselves in this fight or battle between the city and the town. We believe that it's important for them to resolve that issue before we were to provide service, if we were even to provide service. So I think the issue really was, is that in response to the letter from Monty Falls, the advice we've been given by our outside counsel appears to indicate that we could serve Indian River Shores at the end of their franchise agreement, and I'd be happy And I'd be happy to try to answer any other questions.
Kevin, did you want to come up now?
Brian Foley.
I'm sorry, Brian.
That's all right. I had an unengraver in school that called me Kevin for eight years. I don't have much to add to your able counsel's summary. I would just thank the commission for this consideration. We also have obtained an independent opinion from Holland and Knight that we will be sharing in written form with you concerning the inability to enforce the exclusive service areas. In technical legal jargon, I used to tell my clients, if anybody tried to enforce that provision, they'd be in a boatload of trouble. I think it raises antitrust concerns. But the primary issue is that the franchise agreement from the county expired by its own turn. So there really is no impediment. This is a feasibility study to look into the cost of disconnecting from the city and the cost of connecting with the county that the town is paying for. The only thing we need is cooperation from your staff and some staff time. There really is no case or controversy right now to resolve with the city of Vero Beach should they attempt to try to enforce the so-called exclusive service area. There's a requirement that you have to have an actual case or controversy. We're a long way away from that. We're just conducting a feasibility study at this point. Do you have any answer, any questions that you have?
Commissioners, I am fully supportive of Dylan's opinion that I think we should be cooperative with the town in their inquiries. I don't see any downside to that. I think it's just being a good community partner with them to share that information. And then the other issues will be resolved down the road. But moving forward now, I see no reason why we should not cooperate with them and have our staff assist them with the feasibility study. So with that, I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation.
Mr. Chairman.
That's a motion by Lieutenant O'Brien, second by myself, and there's discussion.
Thank you. You know, we've been involved, the county, I mean, has gotten involved in contentious and litigious matters between Indian River Shores and the city of Vero Beach in the past. I was the mayor of the city of Vero Beach when that happened. That's a bad road to go down. And we would be, in effect, creating a similar, if not the same, situation going forward if we are, if the county, if we insert ourselves at this point in time. And I did see, I think, Mr. Rob Bolton, who is the utilities director of the city of Vero Beach, and I'd like to invite him to comment, should he wish to do so.
Rob Bolton, utilities director for the city of Vero Beach. Thank you, Chairman O'Brien, for pulling this item. I think one of the concerns that the city had was that it was going to be just a consent item, and it wouldn't be able to be discussed in a public forum. And I'm glad you are now discussing these items in a public forum. I wish that the city manager was here to discuss this, and that he's not. He's got a city council meeting, and it was in conflict today. So I came to take a look at what's going on and see how this would move forward. I would like to reserve any other comments for him to make a comment on whatever actions that you all take today. And maybe it would be an item that best would be tabled so that he could come and speak in front of you at a next council, you know, next commission meeting. I don't think every single one of them is an item of, or a meeting of conflict. I think you have more meetings than the city does. And hopefully, that might be a way you could get some more comments from the city. Thank you.
Well, would the board be willing to do this next week, then? And we could invite the city manager for the city of Vero Beach to move this to next week, our next meeting?
We have a motion on the floor, and I would have to ask the maker on that. But I just wanted to...
I think that would be fair.
Say something else, as far as fairness. The proposal, the discussion, is for a feasibility study. It is not to take issue. It is not to take sides. It is not to force the hand or promote any one furtherance. It is to look at a feasibility study, which is being paid by the town, not by us, not by our taxpayers. So in essence, it's just the allowances of accessibility to our county staff that can provide further assistance, documentation, facilitation for the study to be utilized and assessed. Quite frankly, the feasibility study may come out in a negative fashion by the providers and not a positive fashion by the providers. It also may benefit the city of Vero Beach or find in those lines, or it may not. But it's merely a feasibility study. It's not to take point and issue. So I think that's a moot discussion at this point as far as delaying it for further discussion. We're actually inviting further debate, and then we would then be part of the fertilization of the debate by having it discussed and debated before us.
I beg to differ. Staff time is money. So it is a financial commitment by definition. Our staff will be spending time on this. Our staff has already been hard-pressed through COVID, as you know, and is probably running behind in many areas. I know they've been very hard-pressed. So this is adding to that. And the study itself, it says right here, it's, "Conduct the study contingent upon agreement by the county to cooperate in the process." So, you know, we're definitely, you're taking a side here. I mean, to say you're not is...
There is no side here at all.
You're taking a side. It's right there. And what is wrong? What is wrong with giving it a fair hearing? What is wrong with giving it a fair hearing and allowing the city manager to speak?
Commissioner, can you identify us taking a side here?
Yes. You're making a financial commitment, number one. Staff time is money. And number two, it states right here in the background that the study is contingent upon agreement by the county to cooperate in the process. So you're taking a side. And at least give it a fair hearing.
Well, all matters regarding the involvement of...
At least give it a fair hearing.
No commissioner can direct any member of staff to do anything other than what is decided upon before this community by this commission. No one commissioner can direct an individual to do anything here in the county.
Well, that's not happening.
It's a protection for you and for all of us.
I'm not directing anybody. I'm talking to you.
Well, that's why we're voting on it.
Asking for a fair hearing, that's all. Not directing anything.
The hearing is then taking a side.
Next week.
But I'm not going to...
I didn't mean hearing in a legalistic manner. I mean, allowing the city manager of the city of Vero Beach the opportunity to speak to us on this matter. That's what I meant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Dylan. Dylan, have we been in litigation against the town of Indian River Shores in the last 10 years? I don't, I know we were on the same side in the electric issue, but I don't remember us being in litigation with them.
And there was a benefit to it?
I'm going, I mean, I remember the electric case, but we weren't at odds with the town of Indian River Shores. In fact, actually, it ended up where the city, the county, and the town all ended up being on the same side and accomplishing probably one of the greatest efforts that we've accomplished in many years. But I'm trying to think of litigation that we've had against the town of Indian River Shores. Jason, do you remember any?
I don't think so. What I recall mainly is the FPL sale, which there were times when the city of Vero was at odds with the town and the county's position. But eventually, they came around, and I think that all worked out together. I can't think of another one. I understand that the town and the city are in a dispute right now over the reuse rates. That is something that is based on something that says they'll match our rates. We have gone, we have ensured that we have not gotten involved in that debate for either side. We're just basically providing information as it's requested, but we have not engaged on that issue. So to my knowledge, the county has not engaged in litigation between the, or a path towards litigation between the city and the town, with the exception of the FPL, which I think was a very positive in recent...
Right. And we were not against the town in that issue. So that was my recollection. I know we may have had some disagreements with the town over things, and we've worked those out. But I don't think we've ever been in litigation against the town of Indian River Shores. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Secondly, I want to thank Mr. Bolton for coming this morning. Thank you for being here. As far as the city manager, you know, I read Mr. Falls' letter, and I think he was very clear on his position. And I think we're being very clear that we're not talking about the service territory at all in this case, that that's an issue. And Jason, in the memo here, it's very clearly that it's up to the town and the city to resolve that issue. So we are not taking sides there at all. We are just going, the motion as it stands is for us just to cooperate with the town on their feasibility study, and that's it. I concur with the chairman. I don't see us taking sides here. I think we're just being a good neighbor and working with one of our municipalities on what they would like to try to do. And so I'm good with the motion as it stands and ready to move it forward.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
I do agree with exactly what you said. I don't believe we're taking sides. I think this is, when I read this, Commissioner Moss, frankly, I didn't see that it was any sort of conflict. I read it as strictly that it's a feasibility study to look at it. I take no sides with the town of Indian River Shores or the city of Vero Beach on this. I don't think this does. The county administrator, he doesn't, you don't feel that way, do you?
Can't get this thing to work. No, I don't feel that way. I think, you know, per the staff report, we view this as something for the town and the city to resolve that issue. I don't believe it's a dispute between us and the city. I view this whole exercise as something, as Dylan had referred to before, like we did with the city of Vero when they explored moving their wastewater plant off of the lagoon. One of their options was to send their waste to our wastewater plants. Staff cooperated with them. We brought an item to this board in December 2019 and got permission to do that. We're doing the same thing here. I think, like city of Vero residents, town of Indian River Shores residents, they're, all of our municipalities are residents of the county and pay taxes to the county. And they seem to want to explore their options in 2027. The dispute, if there is one, and the city's kind of alluding to that here, is between whether the city that has decided that the franchise they entered into with the town ends in 2027 or if the town has, in fact, checked into the Hotel California and can never leave. But that is something between the town and the city and not something that we would, that we are engaging in. We would ask that the town resolve this issue with the city going forward, which the city could easily do if they wanted to. They could give us that written permission that it says in the agreement. But again, that's between the town and the city, is our intention. We don't want to get involved in litigation with the city over this matter.
Yes.
To me, and also, if any municipality, whether it be the city of Vero Beach, town of Indian River Shores, Orchid, Fells, Mayor Sebastian, if they ask us, you know, I think it's admirable that they want to weigh their options. And if they ask us to do, you know, a feasibility study, I think because we're all county residents, it would behoove us to do that. I mean, the city of Vero Beach could technically ask us for a feasibility study on their recreation department, because, you know, the recreation department used to be totally, you know, under the city, and then it was under the county, and then they split, split again and all that stuff back in history. But no, I think Commissioner Fleischer, I understand your concern, maybe. But I think Commissioner Fleischer said it, and I plan on supporting it.
Did you want to say anything? Okay. Unfortunately, the city and the town are in, currently, at this moment in time, are in a contentious, litigious situation. This has occurred in recent history. I was the mayor at the time of the FPL sale, and Indian River Shores put their lawsuit against the city in abeyance. I believe that there currently is a lawsuit between the two parties or a litigious discussion, at any rate, having to do with reuse water. So that's the context in which this other request is coming. And that's why I think this is an inappropriate time to consider it. I understand it's for a feasibility study, but we're still inserting ourselves. There still is money being spent. Staff time is money. So we're still taking a financial position in this that I believe is unwise, unwarranted. And if we go forward with this, please keep track of the time, because I'd like to know what amount of time is spent on this. Thank you.
Well, again, we're not, this is not a billable hours discussion. We are not, again, we're not taking a side. We have the accessibility to all of the documentation and staff's ability to provide the information, if requested, by a feasibility study. And I don't know if that's appropriate to say, well, we spent 19 hours on it, and that would be worth X amount of dollars and do a charge-back ratio. That's not, that's kind of like taking a side.
We already are taking a side, so there you go.
Actually, if we don't do this, we're taking a side of Vero Beach, because the town has a deadline. And if we don't move forward with this, they could, by the time the waste, or the reuse water issue is resolved, it may be too late for the town to do this. So if we don't take action, we're leaning on Vero Beach's side. So, you know, and I don't believe we're doing it either way. But if you want to pick sides, you got to look at the consequence of not doing this. So again, I don't think we're picking sides. I think we're cooperating, and I'm ready to have the vote called here, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? Any attendees? Mr. Bolton?
I'd just like to bring up one point. I don't think the city has made the comment that the town is checking into the Hotel California. I think what they're saying is that there's an agreement between the county and the city as to who serves certain areas. The town has the right to construct their own plants and do whatever they want for service that way. I'm just, we were just bringing the point that we have an agreement between the town, or the city and the county. That was what Mr. Falls was trying to say. Thank you.
We brought on a little further discussion. Please, go ahead.
Respond to that point. That was the boatload of trouble point that I was trying to make before. That if, if there's an agreement for an exclusive service area that is prohibited by the antitrust laws, that's a real problem for whoever enters into that agreement. My understanding is that the county has absolutely considered that position back when it had its initial opinions taken back in 2012. And again, we'll be addressing that in a written opinion. But our council informed the analysis to the county attorney that likely raises very serious antitrust issues issues if two parties were to exclude a third party from having access to an essential facility. So.
And when those issues do get raised, they will not be heard here. Is that correct?
They will not. The only way they get raised is if the city insists on pressing the argument, and if they do, then we will have a case or controversy that unfortunately the town will have to spend more time, more money to litigate. But we have no interest in doing that. We're just looking to assess our options at this point. And Commissioner Fleischer, you put it right. It's, you know, this study could go one of two ways. So if it becomes infeasible for either the county or the city, or the town, rather, we have our answer. But you are taking a side if you deny the feasibility study at this point. The clock is ticking. We have until October 2023 to issue a notice of termination, which is our right under the franchise agreement with the city. And if we get further delay, which appears to be a strategy, then that impedes our ability to even have a feasibility study done to assess our options. So I agree, you are taking a side if you vote no on the feasibility study. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion. Upon motion by Commissioner Bryan, second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Moss dissenting. Anybody need something else? Yeah. At this time, we will take a brief recess.
...in the city of Arrow Beach to increase the age of 21 to purchase tobacco and to regulate the purchase and use of e-cigarettes. The board also asked staff to research whether there could be an exception for military personnel over the age of 18 to purchase tobacco products. The staff researched the topic following federal and state regulation and did not find any exceptions for any age, including military personnel. So, the, so staff drafted this ordinance in compliance with federal and state regulation, increasing the age to 21 to purchase tobacco products and under the state which expressly allows the cities and counties to regulate the use of e-cigarettes. And staff recommends that the board open the public hearing, take any comment, and approve the ordinance.
Thank you. Fine job. Any questions?
No questions, just want to thank Cassidy for, Dylan had assigned her this as her get out of jail task, I guess, and I think she's done a great job on it and appreciate all the work you've put into this, Cassidy, thank you.
Well, now that you mentioned it, Mr. Vice Chairman, you say get out of jail task. Cassidy, you've been one of the finest interns that have been in our county and although, please don't forget us when you depart, and Dylan does the hiring, but I think you might have found a home.
Thanks, I've really enjoyed it here, I've gotten great opportunities.
Thank you for the fine work that you've been doing while you're here. With that, we'd like to now open up the public hearing. There are two podiums if anybody would like to come forward and speak. Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Kylie Savoy and I am the facilitator of the Tobacco-Free Partnership of Indian River County. First, on behalf of the partnership, we would like to extend our thanks to Commissioner O'Brien for just championing this issue and making sure it was drafted and brought forth to you today, and also to attorney Ryan Gold and Cassidy for making sure that this was drafted, and to all of you for allowing me to speak individually and today. You know, this is a great mark in this county when we are putting our children's health first. The federal government raised the age to 21 in December of 2019, and they have been responsible for the enforcement of the age of 21, but to date, a year and a half later, they have only visited 49 out of 189 of our retailers. So, we know that our age is not being adequately enforced at 21. This ordinance tells that we are putting the lives of our children first and that we are going to enforce the age of 21 locally. So, I really do appreciate the work of the commission to draft this ordinance and have it presented today. Thank you.
Thank you for all your hard work too and bringing this to light and discussing with all of us, we truly appreciate all your work. Anything further? Two podiums. Anybody on the internet? All right, thank you. At this point, having given fair and equal opportunity to come forward, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, as we move forward, we will be adopting the draft ordinance into ordinance and regulation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve and adopt the tobacco 21 ordinance as presented.
Second. Upon motion by Vice Chairman O'Brien, second by myself, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Told you it was a fine job, look at that, 5-0.
And to the commission, if I may, just take a moment, Cassidy came here and I'm sure she was thinking, maybe I'll get this experience of getting in front of judges, you know, maybe I'll get to, you know, those types of things that she's experienced in law school, and I thought, no, you know what, I think I've got one better than, you know, anyone, any attorney can get up in front of a judge and, you know, present their argument and maybe have the other side get up and present their argument, but, you know, not a lot of law students get to get up in front of five elected officials with the public watching to see how you handle questions and answers. So, I think this was a little bit different than she was expecting, but she's done a great job and just been really proud of all the different agenda items that Cassidy brought forward and all the other work that she's done with us over the last couple of months, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Well, the next item on the agenda is county administrative matters, we're going to do an update regarding the COVID-19 vaccinations. County Administrator Jason Brown.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, good morning commissioners, just want to give a brief update on COVID vaccine, I will spare you guys a PowerPoint this time, so, good for, you know, trying to make things a little easier. Just starting out, overall, the state of Florida has now vaccinated over 6.3 million Florida residents, that is 29% of the total population of the great state of Florida, and breaking that down further into the 65 and older age group, which was the initial age group that was the target, 3.4 million of those residents, 65 and older, have been vaccinated, which represents about 69% of the over 65 population in the state of Florida. So, for Indian River County, for the great county of Indian River, we have now vaccinated 62,453 county residents, up from about 40,000 last month when I gave the last update, so we are at 39.6% of the total population has been, has received at least one vaccine in the county, so we are really near 40% of that 65 and older age category, which was the primary group that was being done. We have now vaccinated 45,205 residents, that is 85.5% of the total 65 and older population, so, we are, I think, either second or third in our total 65 and older population, last, I understand, from the Health Department out of the 67 counties in the state of Florida, so I think we've done a tremendous job with us and our Health Department and other partners getting those folks vaccinated, and I think that's a great percentage of those 65 and older, I think we're kind of reaching the saturation point on the 65 and older, but that's where we are. Overall, the governor's executive order has opened up the vaccines effective yesterday to anyone aged 16 or older, so, anyone who is 16 or older now can receive the shots, you don't need to work in a certain profession, you don't need to be over any age other than the age of 16, which is the youngest age that the Pfizer vaccine is approved for. One thing of note, Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson are only authorized for 18 and older, we do have the Pfizer shot that's being provided out at the fairgrounds, so, if you have someone in your family that is 16 or 17 and you want to get them vaccinated, the fairgrounds is a good venue for that because we have the Pfizer vaccine, some locations you go to may have Moderna or Johnson &amp; Johnson, and those are perfectly good, you know, vaccines, but you can't get them if you're 16 or 17. One important thing to note is, for someone under 18 to receive the vaccine, a parent or guardian must be present, so, if there's a 17-year-old in your household, you need to have a parent or guardian go along with them so that they can be authorized to have the shot because they cannot consent to that, there is information on the county's website about exactly what fulfills that role of parent or guardian. To the county's waitlist, we now have, as of this morning, 25,592 people are in total in the county system, I will say that about 48% of those have either been vaccinated or scheduled to be vaccinated, that's 12,256, so we're nearly half of the group, another 38% or 9,600 have either declined, have declined to have the shot, so they've, I call that, I got the shot at Publix, you know, category, so, we currently have 3,650 people registered on the system that have not either received the shot or told us they no longer want the shot from us, so, the group of people that is in our waitlist that has not received the shot is only 14% or 3,600, most of those folks have received an invitation, unless they signed up very recently, they've at least received an invitation from us, so, I think that's progressing very well, we've worked our way through the waitlist, if you sign up, if you sign up on our system, it will be a very short, in very short order, you should receive an available appointment. So, that's where we are, things are going very well out there, great work with our Health Department, some of the help that we've had from the state, DM, brought in some contract nursing assistance, and our fire rescue folks and our Parks and Rec for keeping the fire, keeping the fairgrounds going with all of the moving parts there and all the events that go on there, whether it's the firefighters' fair or the, or, you know, antique show or whatever that's happening at that event, at that facility, because it is well-used, and things have been going well there, so, that's all I have unless you have any questions for me.
Well, Jason, I have to say that it's been very enlightening and very positive, the comments coming in from the public about their experience have been overwhelmingly positive, and they're stating what an experience, how quick and efficiency it is, so, again, to Chief Stone, Department of Health, and all of our frontline workers that are getting those shots in the arm, we say thank you. It's been basically under a 20-minute process, and up until now, I didn't qualify until the most recent classification by the governor, but I want to ensure everybody else gets their shot first. Some have experience, does anybody want to share any experience they've had at the fairgrounds?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can, several months ago when the governor dropped at the age 60, I qualified, so I got my first shot two weeks ago on a Friday, and, yeah, absolutely everybody out there, from the first person you see that checks your name in, to the firefighters that check you after your wait period, everyone is just doing an awesome job out there, they're enthusiastic, they're polite, they're friendly, they're helpful, just an awesome job by everybody out there, so, as you said, kudos to them for doing such a great job. According to the second shot calendar on our website, I'm supposed to be getting my second shot on Friday, I haven't gotten the little text message yet, but hopefully they'll confirm that the next day or two and we'll be good to go. I don't know, fortunately or unfortunately, I didn't have much of a reaction to the first shot, and it's my understanding that if you have a good, strong immune system, you tend to have a stronger reaction to the shot, so, not having a reaction is kind of bad news in a way. So, it's kind of, you know, a sticky situation here because you're kind of hoping, yeah, well, the second shot, I hope I get a little reaction, yeah, I want to make sure I've got a good system, but, yeah, they're doing an awesome job out there and just kudos to everybody, what they're doing out there, it's just phenomenal, just a great thing. One question for Jason, how many vaccines are we getting a week now roughly, do you know?
I don't have the current number this week, I can provide that info to you, but I can say that we have reached the point where we are not supply constrained at this point, we are able to vaccinate the folks that are showing up, I think the demand has softened a little bit, I think there was, at the front end of this, you had a lot of people who were in that over 65 age group and they had maybe, they were not leaving the house, and they were very, you know, concerned about their health, should they get it, and so, there was a tremendous urgency there. What I think we're seeing with the younger groups is, I'm hoping not vaccine hesitancy so much as, there is some of that, but I think some of it is it's not as urgent a need for a lot of the folks, and so, I think we've got a good balance between supply and demand right now, so, we're basically able to provide, we're basically able to fulfill the demand, so there's a very short wait, if you get on the list, you should get an opportunity for an appointment very soon, but I will get the number of vaccines that we're getting this week to you.
And could you update us briefly next week, I'd just like to see, now that it's opened up to a much broader age category, if our waitlist numbers move significantly or not, because I think you're right, and at some point, we're going to get to the saturation point where we're going to have a lot more vaccines and people that want them, and then we might look at alternate distribution sites or, you know, may not have to have the big mass vaccination site at the fairgrounds, maybe something more targeted to the hard-to-reach folks, things like that, so, just be interested to see how our numbers on the waitlist change after this coming week when it's been opened up to 16 and older.
All right, thank you, we'll give that update, and, yeah, I think as the Health Department goes there, they will, the focus will be more on some targeted direction for the vaccines in the coming weeks.
Great, thank you, Jason.
Anything further?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner O'Brien, that's a good idea, yeah, the weekly update would be great because maybe we can, you know, move on to the next step, open the county up more, maybe look at the mask options and things like that in the near future, let's hope so, but I can tell you that my experience was like Commissioner O'Brien's, that we called and five days later, we got an appointment at the fairgrounds, my wife and I, and it was flawless, I mean, we weren't there 30 minutes through the whole process, I mean, from the day we pulled, from the time we pulled in to the time we left, it was just outstanding and everybody was great, and I think that we're doing a good job, and I think we are getting, hopefully, we're getting to that point where, like Commissioner O'Brien said, we won't need the, maybe the fairgrounds, we can get it in your doctor's office and other areas, and we can, like I said, we can target specific groups, but I've heard nothing but praise from everyone that's doing it at the IG Center, that's doing it at the fairgrounds and other places, I think it's been great, I can remember what we went through back in January, it wasn't so great, and I think we've come a long ways, and I think the statistics show that we've done an outstanding job, and I appreciate your efforts and all your staff's efforts and everything that's done and what Chief Stone has done and all the nurses and the people helping and the Treasure Coast Community Health and everything have just been outstanding, and let's move on so we can get totally back to normal real soon.
Commissioner Mott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say a special thank you to Chief Stone because he's, you know, he was, everyone here has done a great job, but, you know, he was the boots on the ground, and I have to say, I saw him when this whole thing started, and he did, he did look a bit tired, you might remember that, but, you know, God bless the man, he just powered through it. And also, special thanks to Vicky Soleil at Treasure Coast Community Healthcare, that very first weekend, that was, remember that, that was New Year's Eve weekend, they were out there at the fairground, she had, her people gave up some of their, some of that weekend, just, you know, to serve the community, so, special thanks to both of them, and thank you to all.
Anything else? The only other comment I have is that Publix has air conditioning and our tent doesn't, but as far as the expedition, it's...
We don't have air conditioning, but we're, you know, we're working on that solution, and I will say, you know, the lines moved quickly, I heard it was slowed down a little bit, last Wednesday, there was some guy in a blue truck asking a bunch of questions, but they took good care of him, I've heard, but, so, I had a good experience getting my shot out there as well, but, yeah.
There was, yeah, and from what I observed, I could not have been more proud of every member of the team, it almost appeared as the vehicles weren't even stopping, I think they stopped momentarily for a shot, but they were just moving right along in the queue and a lot different from when it all began, so, thank you, we're getting it right. Any other comments? Anybody else want to? Nobody's on the internet? All right, we'll move right along, and the next item is Public Works, I see Rich Burke is here, and that'll be the research review phase of Indian River County Lagoon Management Plan Update Number Three.
Hi, good morning, my name is Molly Klempeter, I'm Public Works Coastal Division Lagoon Plan Environmental Specialist, and as mentioned, I will be giving you guys the research review phase of the Indian River Lagoon Management Plan Update Three today. So, first off, we've already seen this slide, but I do still want to acknowledge the other departments that are involved throughout this process and the people within those departments. So, this third update is going to cover five different topics, we're going to start with hydrology and hydrodynamics, move into water quality, move to organic materials and sediments, move into marinas and boat ramps, and then finish with sustainability and resiliency. So, first is hydrology and hydrodynamics, so, hydrology and hydrodynamics really describes the water movement throughout the whole lagoon-wide system, this is affected by things like the creation of inlets, both of our inlets, so, the Fort Pierce inlet and the Sebastian inlet are both man-made inlets and were not part of the natural system many years ago, the creation of mosquito impoundments, drainage canals, filled wetlands, hardened shorelines, and other development have all changed the movement of water within the lagoon. The lagoon's drainage basin continually changes based on urban, industrial, and agricultural uses, and you can see from that picture, that's a 1945 picture of the Sebastian inlet. There are various forms of freshwater inputs into the lagoon, these come from direct precipitation, surface runoff, relief canals, groundwater seepage, the St. Sebastian River, and discharges from point sources, and then, of course, the saltwater inputs that we receive are from the Atlantic Ocean through those inlets. The, based on the Florida Department of Environmental Protection's SWIL model, which is used to assign loading in the newly adopted BMAP, groundwater accounts for approximately 60% of total nitrogen and total phosphorus into the lagoon, so this is a pretty significant amount considering that's over the majority of nitrogen and phosphorus using their model. So, below the ground level, the county has a superficial aquifer system which interacts with the lagoon, when water seeps into the ground, it migrates downward through the superficial aquifer until it reaches a thick confining layer, the water then migrates horizontally until it reaches conveyance systems to the lagoon such as the drainage canals. Mosquito impoundments were created along the lagoon to accommodate human development starting in the 1920s, mosquito management techniques have changed over the years with the majority currently utilizing rotational impoundment management or RIM management, which allows for the retention of mangroves and other vegetation and for the return of juvenile fishes to nursery areas, this management technique does minimize serious environmental impacts to the lagoon, and they also use integrated pest management, or which is the IPM technique, to control mosquito populations. And this picture kind of shows the southern county portion of the mosquito impoundments there, we have quite a few of them throughout the county, and this is just a little kind of snippet of what we have. Some data gaps in hydrology and hydrodynamics, we would benefit from further research into the hydrology and hydrodynamics within the county itself, the impacts that the inlets have on lagoon hydrology are relatively well-understood and studied, but the interactions as a whole, including the dynamics of all water inputs, could be better understood throughout the county. We would benefit from better understanding superficial groundwater interactions and load estimates into the lagoon, this does play a large part in our BMAP from the DEP and could potentially cost the county millions of dollars, so having a better understanding would benefit us in the future. The county should continue to work with partner agencies to determine the natural hydrologic connectivity throughout the lagoon watershed and what could be done to restore those natural flows. So, I have this set up a little bit differently than the previous ones, I have the questions separated based on topic, so we can either move forward with this format and focus on each specific topic, or we can save all questions to the end, whatever works better.
Mr. Chairman, I could comment now. Okay. So, two things, you know, from my understanding, what I've heard from people who have been around here a long time, you know, 120 years ago, the lagoon was primarily freshwater from the sheet flow coming from west to east, and, you know, that was kind of like the old Everglades sheet flow, it was kind of a slow water movement, and a lot of the nutrients were taken up by vegetation through that process, so, by the time the water got to the lagoon, it was pretty clean and it wasn't coming into like a big dump like we do now, and so, the lagoon could handle that kind of very, what I'd say, either minor, small changes in salinity and such because of the sheet flow. Now, obviously, with the draining, the canals and stuff, when we get a rain event, that water just gets dumped in a big slug right into the lagoon. I'm not sure we can go back to the old days, I just don't think we have the space to do it, but, one thing I think we can look at is, it seems like the current policy on most of the main drainage canals is to just kind of keep the gates open and let the water drain to the very bottom of the ditch, I know the one near my house along 12th Street, you know, it's almost just mud right now because it's been pretty dry, but I think when those canals are lowered, they start pulling in groundwater from the sides, and then, that water is still going on a regular basis to the lagoon, and my neighborhood is on septic tanks, and I can't help but think that 60% nutrients that you were talking about, it's partially because with that drainage ditch so low, and if the groundwater is higher than that bottom of the ditch, that water is going to seep to the ditch, again, coming from a septic tank neighborhood and then flowing to the lagoon, so I think, and I know it's tricky because the water control districts, their job is to drain the land and not flood, but, you know, if they could hold back water for a longer period of time and prevent that groundwater flow from seeping in, I think that would be a big help, so that would be one thing that I would suggest looking at is, is there ways we can keep those, keep the water level in the canals higher to prevent the groundwater from seeping in, and just one comment there. Yeah, and then with the advent of all the inlets, the lagoon went from primarily to be a freshwater body to now much more brackish, and I think that's also when we saw the shift from an oyster population to more of a clam population in the lagoon. I know FIT has done a lot of study on the hydrology of the Sebastian inlet, Dr. Gary Ferrello, so I'm sure you have information from him, and then the Fort Pierce inlet, being quite a bit bigger than Sebastian, it tends to move quite a lot of water through there, so you see the north and south of that inlet, you see that cleaner water extend much further than you do up near the Sebastian inlet, so, I think that's just a function of the size of the inlet, but, anyway, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
About the only thing I do have on you is I've lived here longer than you have.
That's true.
That's about the only thing, because, you know, you're much older than me.
He qualified early for the...
That's right, he got the shot earlier, but, no, you're exactly right, Molly, help me out if I'm wrong, the lagoon depends on some freshwater entering it, it's just now because of people and more asphalt and concrete and developments and stuff, it has, it has to go somewhere and it ends up in the Indian River Farms Drainage District and in the canal, so that's a big issue, I can remember growing up as a kid, the area around the Marle Barber Bridge was never really super clear, but it was clean, I mean, you could swim in it, you could do, you could, you know, catch your fish and you could actually eat the fish out of it, and those things have changed a little bit, it's a little bit different situation now, but, but, most of the time, you know, we had plenty of sea grass and all that sort of stuff, and a lot of the stuff has been because of population growth, I mean, and there's no doubt about that, that that's an issue we have, part of the things that were, at least that I'm looking at, is how to keep some of that, the high nutrient loads out of the river, how are we going to do that, and I'm working on that, we're a long ways from getting there, but we're working on it. One of the interesting slides to change the subject a little bit, can you go back to the show in the Sebastian inlet of 1945? Look at that shoreline right there.
Is that you in the picture?
They didn't worry about beach restoration back then, because of the changes, as you described, what inlets have done, not only to the lagoon, but what inlets have done to the shoreline, what building has done to the shoreline, you know, that shoreline looks pretty, pretty well in order due to the natural flow of that, I think that's actually a great picture to see, I mean, that was before Florida was discovered and before we had to worry about the inlets and navigation, even though those are now important to allow people to enjoy the inlets to navigate, but you can see how much that's changed, but, yes, and I've talked with David Gunner about that numerous times, and David understands it, he understands it, but, but he has to, you know, for the drainage and accounts like that, they have to keep so much water in the canal, there is a standard like three feet is the minimum they can go in the canals, and they do a heck of a job, it's just that I think that we're paroled with more population than obviously had in 1945, and that's created some of the hydrology and hydrodynamics of the river, but, yes, the Indian River does depend on freshwater to come in, we couldn't, it would be a bad... We couldn't, it would be a bad thing to try to eliminate all the freshwater and all the canals and all the ditches that go into the river, but it would actually destroy it. And so that's something we can't do, so.
And, you know, Commissioner Chairman, it's kind of, I think it's an education process with the population because, like, right now with hurricanes, the hurricane has barely moved by us, and people are clamoring, where's our ice? Where's our water? You know, where's all our stuff we want for free? And I think the same with people living here, you know, it's got to be, well, you know, we're, we live in a swamp. This used to be a swamp. This used to be a marsh. And maybe you need to understand that there may be times when you might have water standing in your yard for a couple, three, four days and not just expect it to be gone, you know, three hours after a major rain event. So I think some of it is conditioning the population to understand where they live, what, you know, the impacts and things like that. And just not that, and I know Mr. Gunner, his goal is to get that water from 95 to the lagoon in three hours, but that's really not the best thing overall, and hopefully we can work on modifying that some, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams?
Thank you. Thank you, Molly, for this presentation. I agree. I think the hydrology and hydrodynamics is very important, and we really don't have a complete understanding of the inland hydrology, or at least as much as we need to, to understand how it works with what is going on with the inlets. I share the concerns about the canals, and I think we would benefit, the county would benefit greatly from treating or figuring out a way to treat the water more inland or upstream before it gets to the lagoon. And I understand that that's going to take some partnerships with those agencies, with our local drainage districts and other special districts moving forward, but I think that's really going to be the key, is getting them on board because we lack the control of some of the water that is then put into our system at the very end. Then we have to figure out a way to treat it. It's much easier to do that before it gets to us, and it would not be as costly as some of these larger projects that we have to do. If we could do some incremental treatment as it runs through those canal systems. You know, again, and Rich has, we've had numerous discussions about some of our partner agencies and different ways to address that, but there are so many of those drainage and water control districts within our county. Some are much larger than others, some have much more infrastructure or savvy, I guess, than others. But getting them on board as we move forward, and I know that you guys are aware of that, just reiterating that comment, that we have to have them as partners in order to address our future needs through this program. So hopefully, we'll be able to get there in the future, but I definitely agree, more work needs to be done on understanding kind of the inland hydrology, you know, like the phelsmer areas in a basin. So it's flowing into itself, and we have so many ridges through our, that run through our county between the lagoon all the way to Eha Junction, that that hydrology and some of that stuff, that those water control districts and drainage districts are very much aware of, you know, that hopefully in the future could be shared with us, would help us try to figure out some of those nuances of where and how the water is getting to where it's going. But definitely a good job on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for this information. I appreciate it. And I, you know, I hope we will take this into account when we go forward with the visioning project. And for the community, at the last Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting, that group voted to go ahead with a vision, visioning project for the county. So that's looking at the future, as you are with this, and I hope that this will be part of that. I mean, we need to decide who we, who we are, who we want to be in the future, but we also need to consider the context. I think we need to be very careful in our approach to development. So I hope everyone will participate, and I'm sure we'll discuss that further here as we get closer to the date for implementing that. But that, I think that'll be a great project, the visioning project, and I hope that this will be part of it, and thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Molly. Outstanding. We're going to get the support to continue on. Well, this item does not have to be approved.
I think she's got more.
I have more topics. This is just the first one.
Oh, that's because.
You're not done yet. Okay? All right. So I'll move on to water quality. Degraded water quality negatively impacts the health and diversity of the lagoon. As we know, it's correlated to things like seagrass die-offs and harmful algal blooms. There are, however, numerous regulatory agencies and groups throughout the county that routinely collect and analyze various parameters within water samples. As you can see from the map, there's a lot of water samples going on. There's many different agencies involved. The county's involved, St. John's River Water Management District, DEP, FWC, other stakeholders, other universities, numerous people involved. And we have lots of water quality samples that reflect that. Many of them are long-term monitoring efforts, so we do kind of have an understanding of things have, how things have changed over the years. And this includes the county's monitoring of the relief canals, which date back to 2014. The nitrogen and phosphorus levels are often the main focus of these samples, but nutrient cycling in the lagoon is a very complex and dynamic system because it is an escherine system. Salinity levels vary and are often influenced by rainfall events. It's no surprise to anyone that salinity and rainfall go hand in hand, as the amount of rainfall and freshwater runoff influence salinity levels within the lagoon. Brackish water typically has a salinity level between 0.5 to 30 parts per thousand, and Indian River County's average salinity level is around the mid-20 parts per thousand. So we're a little bit more on the saltier side. Lagoon organisms are able to survive fluctuations in these levels, but extremes in either freshwater inputs or seawater can be detrimental to those organisms. So for example, low freshwater inputs with reduced nutrient inputs can stress or kill plants and animals because they do require a certain amount of nutrients in order to grow and survive. High freshwater inputs, so such as after a hurricane event or a heavy rainstorm, combined with high nutrient inputs, can contribute to the creation of harmful algal blooms in areas. Increased freshwater inputs from heavy rains can also increase sediment inputs due to the erosion, which can smother seagrasses and oysters. And then finally, as droughts become more frequent and more intense in the future, rain levels are expected to continue to decrease with implications on future salinity levels. So for example, I have pulled the St. John's River Water Management District Water Quality Status and Trends Report for 2020 within Indian River County. So this first slide that you're looking at is the total nitrogen levels in the lagoon and the trending status of them. Within the red box are more of the lagoon-focused water quality sampling stations. So to kind of break it down for you, the light blue circle, which you see kind of up in the northern portion of the county, indicates a low-range insufficient data collection point. And that low range is identified to your right with the 0.757 milligrams per liter. The light blue square indicates a low-range stable data point. The medium blue square indicates a mid-range stable data point. And then the medium blue inverted triangle equals a mid-range decreasing data point, to kind of give you a snapshot of what total nitrogen is doing in our lagoon in 2020. And then I've done the same for total phosphorus. Once again, this is St. John's River Water Management District Water Quality Status and Trends for 2020. This is our total phosphorus snippet. The medium blue circle indicates a mid-range insufficient data. A medium blue triangle is for a mid-range increasing data. And then the dark blue inverted triangle is for high-range decreasing. And then I have an example of kind of what those data points are to your right with, indicated by the numbers. So water quality data gaps. Restoration efforts to bring back seagrass beds and healthy ecosystems may require the county and regulatory agencies to look beyond the normal focus on nitrogen and phosphorus. Water quality is a complicated topic in the portion, in this portion of the lagoon. Indian River County does not experience detrimental concentrations of nitrogen and phosphorus when compared to the northern portions of the county, or northern portions of the lagoon, I'm sorry. And other entities have recognized this in their various reports. So for example, this is a snippet from the Marine Resources Council's Indian River Lagoon Report Card from 2020. They, they put these out on an annual basis, and in the highlighted section below, you can see that they indicate, "The graph below shows that water quality in the central IRL South has exceeded regulatory standards several times and is consistently improving." The water quality trend line goes up, which is that blue line that you see on the graph. Seagrass, however, continues to decline independently of water quality, which is indicated by the orange line on the graph, suggesting something other than the four regulatory parameters, total nitrogen, total phosphorus, chlorophyll A, and turbidity are driving seagrass health in this region. It's also called out in DEP's newly released 2021 Central Indian River Lagoon BMAP update. This section from that update says that the goal of the Indian River Lagoon Basin TMDLs is to recover the deeper seagrass habitats. The seagrass response is the most important factor in evaluating the success of the nutrient TMDLs. Even if the relationship among nutrient loads and seagrass recovery is not as predicted by the regression model, the load reduction requirements themselves will not determine TMDL success. The assessment of success is based on whether the seagrass grows at sufficient depths. So the county should continue to maintain and run its regional-scale nutrient-reducing projects to maintain nutrient levels and work in coordination with outside agencies on collecting and analyzing water quality samples throughout the lagoon watershed. This continuous monitoring effort on the health and vitality of the lagoon's ecosystem and organisms to understand the levels of restoration achieved based on these nutrient targets will be very important since we are held to a standard when it comes to total nitrogen and total phosphorus. But we're not the only ones experiencing this. In the 2021 Florida Macroalgae Workshop that was put on by various entities, including the four national estuary programs, various universities, and various water management districts, to name a few, three representatives from the other national estuary programs, so Tampa Bay Estuary Program, Sarasota Bay Estuary Program, and then the Coastal and Heartland National Estuary Partnership, all indicated that they are facing similar issues in regards to meeting nitrogen and phosphorus loading levels without observing improvement and growth of seagrass communities in their areas. So now I'll stop for questions on water quality, if you have any.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Molly, one thing on the seagrasses, I really deeply believe that our biggest issue right now is the level of muck in the lagoon, and I think it has a negative impact in two ways on seagrasses. One is, the seagrass tries to grow in the muck. It's very soft, it's very silty, and there's nothing for those roots to grab onto. So the first time there's any kind of wind event or waves or chop in the lagoon, those seagrass plants just come right up out. There's nothing to anchor them. So I think it's a big problem there. And then secondly, when you do get those events, that muck is easily resuspended in the water column, blocking off sunlight and having a negative impact that way. You know, if you go up to some of the areas, a good area is the 510 Causeway up there on the north side. A lot of people go there for the beach and things. You used to be able to walk out there, and that would be good, firm sand. There'd be a lot of seagrass there. Now you go out there and walk, you're sinking six inches down into the muck, I think. So to me, that's the big issue there. Yeah, we can have as clean of water as you can get, but if those roots can't anchor into something to really hold them down, they're just going to pop up in the first wave, and that's going to be that. So I really think focusing on the muck, it would, is going to be our best bet to meet those seagrass goals. So just kind of where that's at.
Commissioner, I think you're right on that. Just talking with a lot of the local fishermen that are out there, you know, the water be clear when it's nice and sunny and the wind dies down, but it used to take a sustained wind event like we had last weekend or something like that, where it's, you know, 15 miles an hour plus before the water got dirty or nasty. Now they say it's just a strong, a fishable, for those fishermen, a fishable wind will make the turbidity in the river become terrible. And thus, like you said, with the turbidity in the river, you're not going to get any sunlight, so the grass can't continue to grow. And again, which said it doesn't have anything to hold on to. So there's definitely some, some issues out there. I know one of the local fishermen, who's a good friend of mine, and he's just, he's just excellent at what he does when it comes to fishing. There was 150 sites he could go to in the river. Now there's 75. It's cut in half to where he could go, where he could count the fishing was good, which is where there is seagrass, where the water's fairly clear and stuff like that. So it's definitely an issue. The sediment and stuff is definitely an issue, and, and, and that's a big ticket item with, when you're talking about, you know, how do you remove it? How do you do it? I know Florida Inland Navigation District's working on some of that stuff for the channel, but it's a, that's definitely an issue, and it's one that, that we need to seriously take a look at.
Well, certainly, and it brings up to the discussion, when Fine was doing that, that project, when they were doing the muck removal, they were doing it from deep, the deeper portion of the channel. And it's interesting because the bentic level has, has to be sandy soil, as Commissioner O'Brien points out, for a good grass growth. When they were doing that deep channel and removing it and placing it in their bank area, a lot of that has returned. It is definitely coming away from our shore area in the river. So perhaps maybe more of that would be the solution to give a sandier soil to the baseline. Very important. The muck is definitely a key signature.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Molly, it's really great to see all the water sampling points, and I would hope that that's going to provide us with some historical information, especially as we then, as we move through this process, add in current and future growth patterns and really help us identify future sites for projects or future sites of concern. So it's nice to see that there's that much information out there and that it goes back as far as it does. I would echo my fellow commissioners' concerns about the seagrass and muck and turbidity. I think it's going to be very important that we do continue to look outside nitrogen and phosphorus at ways to address that. I know that, you know, regulatorily, we are kind of constrained to that, but it's not moving the dial. So there's got to be a way around that, and muck removal is kind of a big undertaking, but I, I think there's been success in other areas with smaller projects or, you know, different types of, versus just dredging muck removal, maybe aeration and stuff like that on a smaller scale in some of those pockets. But I would encourage, and I'm glad to see that you've included that in there, looking outside of just those, those numbers. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you for this information. I agree with my colleagues on this. Muck is a key concern. While I served on Vera Beach City Council, there was a lot of discussion about it. I think there was a trial project at that point. I'll have to, I'll have to check the records on it. Are there any current projects having to do with muck removal, either here or one of the other, you know, areas that you showed on the map?
So I do know that the Vera Beach Marina, for their updates that they're doing, they are looking at removing some muck for the updates they're making to the Marina.
That's your next section, too, isn't it?
Yep. The next section, we're talking about mucks.
We jumped the gun on you a little bit. But I did have Commissioner Adams trigger the spark. You showed all the water quality monitoring sites. How are we on a rainfall network?
How is it being measured, or?
Well, my thought is, we just don't have enough rainfall monitoring sites throughout the county, because as you know, particularly in the summer, rainfall can be very isolated events. And I know the Marine Resource Council up in Melbourne, they have a whole network of homeowners that live on water bodies that do water quality monitoring for them. And I thought, well, you know, if we could get like 100 different rainfall gauges scattered throughout the county, so then we have a better idea of where rain is hitting instead of just like, I think we use a rain gauge at the airport, but that doesn't tell you the whole story. Just, so I would think one important thing on water quality is better data on how much input we're getting. input we're getting from rain. And to do that, we need a broader network and, and maybe we could do that through citizen initiatives and get people to just put a rain gauge in their backyard and once a week they call in or email a number or, or something. But just, I think getting a better feel for the, the rainfall throughout the whole county would help us then analyze that, um, data. And then also, if you don't mind, if those graphs you showed, if you could get me hard copies of that or send the, so I can take a little bit deeper look at it, we'd appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. So as you guys nicely segued, we will be going into organic materials and sediments. This is also known as muck. So the lagoon bottom is naturally and historically composed of sandy sediments with minor accumulations of organic matter from erosion of shorelines and the breakdown of vegetation. Muck is classified as a black, organic-rich, mud-rich, high-water contact sediment with a high nutrient content. Muck sources are fine sediments and fine biological particles that are carried to the lagoon via tributaries, canals, and stormwater systems. Muck is prevalent in the mouths of creeks, channel bottoms, the intercoastal waterway, and in deeper pockets of water near tributaries. Muck increases turbidity, depletes oxygen in sediments in the water above, stores and releases nutrients, creating muck fluxes, covers the natural sandy bottom, and destroys healthy communities by blocking out light and smothering the environment. Muck forms from a combination of factors with coastal development and nutrient runoff encouraging the formation and settlement of muck throughout the region. So I was not able to find a great one-source map of muck within the county. There does not seem to be one entity that has gone through and completely mapped the whole section. Um, there are small pockets of mapping based on projects being done such as, such as the Vero Beach Marina, um, but wide scale, we really don't have a complete understanding of what's out there. This study from 2014, um, shows that the thickest layers are near urban areas, which isn't surprising considering coastal development and runoff are usually associated with those urban areas. Um, and so the thickest layers were found near Titusville, Cocoa, Melbourne, and Vero Beach. However, in 2020, during a presentation to interested county residents about the potential Bethel Creek project, Dr. Dwayne DeFreeze of the IRL NEP stated that the county's waters contain less than 10% of muck cover as a whole. Some options to get rid of the muck in the lagoon include muck dredging. Muck dredging is an expensive undertaking. It requires mapping efforts to determine the depth and expanse of muck present in the area and requires various permits. There are mobilization and equipment operating costs associated with it. It does require partnership agreements with the Florida Inland Navigation District for upland areas that are needed to be identified to act as dredge material management areas for storage of the muck once it's removed. Settling ponds are required before excess water can be discharged, and this excess water that is discharged should be treated to decrease the amount of nutrients returned to the lagoon. Finally, you need to find and access a disposal site for the muck that is settled out, um, and, and this needs to be established with minimal fiscal, environmental, and societal Another option is muck capping. So muck capping is, in essence, placing a thick layer of sand over areas of muck. This prevents the re-suspension of muck while providing a clean substrate for natural recruitment. It reduces turbidity and improves water quality, can be utilized for seagrass or mangrove plantings because you are putting a nice sandy layer on top of it, and it's ideal in shallow water environments. However, long-term monitoring is required for things like muck capping to ensure the longevity of the sand cap, um, to ensure that it's not silted over with new muck sediments or carried away to expose the underlying muck. So more research does need to be done in order to understand the dynamics and interactions of muck in the lagoon. We need to better understand muck flux ratios. Brevard County has a pretty good understanding of their ratios because they have done so much muck work, um, but as far as us in Indian River County, um, I was not really able to find something as informational as what Brevard County has. As I mentioned, we don't have a county-wide muck map from a single source, um, and cost-benefit analyses need to take place before a muck dredging or a capping project occurs because they are expensive and they will require a lot of excess things besides just paying for it and then finding sites for it and things like that. The county should educate homeowners on proper disposal of grass clippings and other yard plants. We should continue educating homeowners on reducing the amounts of runoff nutrients such as installing living shorelines, um, and things like that. And then we should continue to encourage lagoon-front homeowners to naturally stabilize their yards using living shorelines, which will hold back sediments and filter nutrients before it enters the water. The most beneficial act that we can do as a county, whether it's homeowners or on a larger scale, is to stop the source of muck before it reaches the lagoon, so that way it cannot create, it cannot form and create muck that we see settling there. So with that, I will take any questions on organic materials and sediments.
Molly, you pointed out, uh, the societal concerns and, uh, not, not being offensive with the byproducts of muck removal. Um, it, again, reverting back to the FINE project, I remember there was, there was quite discuss, much discussion on what's going to happen with all of this, this black goo substance that they're going to be storing on the banks. And as it turned out, there was little or no odor and it, it dried rather quickly and became a solid substance. And I, I think the discussion was more intense than the actual collateral concerns. We, we really didn't have much of that, and that was right off US1 with a, a lot of traffic passing by and it still was not, not noted that there was a process happening behind the fence line.
That's great then, yeah.
Just wanted to touch base. I, I think that the concern is more, I think the term muck and placing it in strategic areas is always going to be a concern, but I, I don't think that there's much, uh, much valued concern as to what it, the exposure to the community or, uh, any environmental or social concerns. The environmental concern is when it's down there.
Yes.
So, um, Molly, I, I may have to respectfully disagree with Dr. DeFreeze. I, I, I think it's a lot more than 10%, but I think that highlights, I think, one of our priorities and hopefully you can make a, a note that I think you should come back to us, uh, for funding approval would be a, um, maybe not, maybe not entirely county-wide muck survey, but start with a, and I would say start with a section up near the inlet, dispatching inlet where we have the cleanest water. And the idea would be there to, you know, map the muck there and then see if we can either dredge it out or, you know, the sand capping might work if we can put some breakwaters in there to, to keep it protected, to everything gets grown in. Um, but, but do a pilot study up there or something like that where we have cleaner water coming in. Um, and then eventually, I think county-wide, we need a full muck survey and study to see what we got, but maybe starting somewhere on the north end and moving forward, but definitely we, we need to get a better handle on where the muck is and how bad it is. And then secondly, it's, it's probably been four or five years where we did have Dr. Telfrey come speak to the commission on, on muck. I think it'd be a good idea to have him come back at some point in the future and update us on where he is and things like that. And I know that the Brevard Lagoon Management Plan had a lot of muck removal funds and maybe get an update from them on where they are and, and how it's going and if they're seeing a benefit to it. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Brien, I think that's a, that's a good idea. I think that's a great idea actually to look at the, you know, muck mapping and see what we can do with that within regards. And also going back to the seagrass, I, I think we, we briefly had a conversation a couple of months ago where I showed you, showed you all that Sarasota County is, uh, employs, uh, citizens, especially during boating season, to go out and, and, and measure the seagrass. They've got some really easy, cool stuff that can do it to measure seagrass and they report back to the thing. It has to be like a, you know, county-sponsored event, but the materials are really cheap and, and that's something that, 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 you know, maybe we could look into with the, you know, also with the seagrass. But I think the muck, uh, the muck study, if we want to call it that, at least, at least see the feasibility of it, be a, be a great idea. It, it brings back the question, because I saw on one of the slides, you know, Dr. Freeze was talking about when, when my predecessor, Commissioner Zork, was, uh, talking about the Bethel Creek, uh, area. Every, all the talks that I've had and the information I've gathered on that, because I, I wanted to follow up on that, the idea seemed like it was a pretty good idea, but what they're, all the scientists that I spoke with and all the researchers that I spoke with have said that before you do anything, you have to remove the muck in Bethel Creek somehow. That's, that's the biggest issue they have right there. Once that done, you'd see a vast improvement and, uh, you know, then, then move on from there to whatever else you might want to do. But the, the pump seawater in it right now is not, not a, not a good option. It would do more, it would do more damage to the, to the river than it would help the river because there's no outlet and the fact that, uh, you'd be moving that muck and whatever's in that muck on the bottom of that river and the rest of it would be detrimental. So that, that just goes to show the importance, I think, of, of, uh, of what we need to address the question somehow of, of, you know, taking care of these organic materials.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I just want to follow up on the muck mapping. I, I would encourage you to possibly put together some type of grant application for the IRL NEP. I know they have moved forward, um, on just overall mapping of the shoreline throughout the entirety of the lagoon because there was pockets of missing information. Um, and they have been supportive of those types of applications because it provides, um, overall information for everybody else too. So there might be some ways, um, to help aggregate some of that funding and bring that forward sooner rather than later. So I would definitely reach out, um, and see about that and I'd be happy to help with that if need be.
Yeah, um, and I, I appreciate what Commissioner Adams just said, and you, as, as you may be aware, we now have a FINE Florida Inland Navigational District appointee, finally. We haven't had one in a very long time. So you might want to reach out, uh, to him as, as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Next, we will move on to marinas and boat ramps. Um, it is no surprise that the lagoon is heavily utilized by the local community and visitors for boating purposes, whether it be fishing or recreation in the lagoon or access to the Atlantic Ocean through one of the inlets. Within the county, we have 10 public boat ramps. Two are owned by the city of Sebastian, two are owned by the city of Vero Beach, one is state-owned, and five are owned by the county. So next, I'm going to go over kind of some of the state foundational programs, um, that they have on clean boating. First, I'm going to talk about the Clean Vessel Act. This was authorized in nineteen ninety-two and is DEP-administered. It sets a precedence to establish pump-out and dump station facilities to ensure the proper disposal of sewage throughout the Clean Vessel Act Grant Program. Next is the Clean Boater Program. This was established in 2001 and works to involve boaters in protecting waterways through education about native vegetation, wildlife, and the natural environment. It was established as part of FDEP's Clean Vessel Act and works in collaboration in the Clean Marina Program. It provides information and educational materials to boaters with a Clean Boater Pledge boaters can take to promise to protect the environment, and then you get fun little souvenirs if you take that pledge. Next is the Clean Marina Program. This was established in 2000 and is administered through DEP. It assists in the implementation of best management practices that focus on sensitive habitats, waste management, stormwater control, spill prevention, and emergency preparedness. Facilities must submit a Clean Marina application and pledge, complete an action plan, and carry out an environmental review with a Clean Marina Coordinator. And there are currently 13 Marina facilities throughout the county that have this designation. Finally, um, responsible boating is necessary to protect the lagoon, as you can see with some of these manatee flows zones that we have throughout the county. Um, improper boating practices can be detrimental to a healthy environment and the organisms that live in it. It can cause erosion from repeated boat wake, um, and such as the manatee zones, if you don't slow down and respect them, um, can harm organisms that utilize the lagoon. Boaters need to be smart and educated about their responsibilities. So here are some examples that, um, of ways residents can help educate themselves. Um, as you see, there's a Clean Boater Pledge, which I touched on previously, and you fill it out, you send it into DEP, and they'll send you some souvenirs and a sticker, um, saying that you are a clean boater. And then there are various websites that offer clean boating courses, um, such as this Boat U.S. Foundation Clean Boating Course, which you can take and it's free, um, who want, for people who want to learn more about clean boating and taking care of your waterways. So the county should continue to promote boater education and engagement programs. Um, we should continue to utilize all the various boating programs that are offered by DEP, especially the ones that have grants associated with them to help with funding costs. We should continue monitoring the marinas within unincorporated areas of the county to provide information on the services they offer and designations they have. And I know this is a hot topic, so I wanted to at least acknowledge it, um, ahead of time, that the second update will focus on rules, regulations, and the extent of derelict vessels and mooring within the lagoon. So I'm not skipping over it, I'm just saving it for next time. And then do we have any questions on this?
I do. Um, yeah, looking for the next update because I think we've talked before about all the boats that are now moored along the canals around Joe Eerman, um, or Eerman Island, I guess, it's just Eerman Island. And whether those people are using the pump-out facilities or not, you know, it's very unclear to me. I do know that a lot of the federal regulations about dumping really seem to be only focused on the fecal coliform aspect of the, um, the holding tanks on the, on the liverboard boats, which is all well and good, but the treatment systems they have aren't designed for nutrient removal. And so unless you are a no-discharge zone, liverboard boats, if they treat the, the, uh, the holding tank material, they can still dump it overboard. And there's only, I think only two no-dump things in the entire country, and apparently it's pretty hard to get an area declared a, a no-discharge zone. I know the Clean Water Colation is working on that, so we should coordinate with them and see if we can't get the, the Indian River County part of the lagoon designated as a no-discharge area. Because again, they're, they're not treating for nutrients, they're just treating for the fecal coliform, and then they can still dump. So I think that's a big issue. But, and I'll look forward to your update next time on the, the derelict boats and all the other liverboard stuff. Thank you.
I'll just make one comment. Uh, the city of Vero Beach has been working with the Fish and Wildlife, uh, the state agency, and they've been helpful with regard to the derelict vessels. That is a really serious problem, and, and thank you also, uh, to Commissioner O'Brien for calling attention to discharge, uh, problems. I mean, I think that's something we'll really need to address, uh, you know, long-term in whatever fashion, and perhaps again, the new appointee, the FINE appointee can, can be helpful in this regard, but thank you for this information.
So last topic, um, we have resiliency and sustainability. These are measures taken to ensure the future of the lagoon, its shoreline, and the surrounding infrastructure within the watershed. This is a big and small approach, so for example, the county would have more of a regional scale presence in this movement, whereas homeowners would have more of a smaller scale, um, in regards to their own homes. These are approaches and proactive steps the county should factor in when creating new projects and updating existing infrastructure. We should encourage the use of natural forms of protection. Um, this, these are in the forms of things like living shorelines. Um, as you can see, the Jones Pier Conservation Area recently planted their own living shoreline. Um, you can see an example of it with this picture. And then maintenance of natural areas, also calling out, um, the Parks and Conservation Lands Program, for example, with their Lost Tree Island Project. Um, they're planning to remove invasives and replant it with native plants, um, and that'll help with the resiliency of those islands in the future. We should continue to plan for and design resiliency in all projects created and any updates performed on existing projects. Lagoon resiliency must also focus on infrastructure within the lagoon watershed to plan for and protect from flooding and inundation leading to the failure of systems. This can also be referenced in regards to emergency response measures that have the potential to impact critical infrastructure such as roads and energy systems. Once resiliency is established, it is important to make sure these resilient-minded endeavors maintain a level of sustainability so that they can adapt over time. Many facets within this research project, um, do kind of highlight Many facets within this research project do kind of highlight the efforts of resilience, resiliency and sustainability, such as the resilient marinas concept. So these are some real-world exempl, examples of resiliency and sustainability that have been undertaken in Florida. So for example, this is FDEP's Florida Resilient Coastline Program. They work in collaboration with various entities at the federal, state, and local levels, and I have identified these 12 Florida resources as what they really want to focus on when it comes to resiliency into the future. Next, I'm going to talk about the IRL NEP's Ensuring Resiliency for the Indian River Lagoon. They helped publish this report back in 2020 that does talk about future resiliency and the monitoring and review of action plans when it comes to the Indian River Lagoon. And then finally, the Clean and Resilient Marina Program is kind of a step above the Clean Marina Program. It involves the five Gulf of Mexico states, and it kind of focuses not only on clean marinas, but also in creating them to become resilient marinas, so it's just another added level of protection. So future sustainability and resiliency of the lagoon will impact more than lagoon waters. This will also impact the environment, infrastructure, and the economy. We should continue to create proactive projects that will adapt over time to challenges experienced. We should continue to find and apply for applicable grants that will help costs associated with future projects and metrovits. So for example, the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities, or BRIC, grant that is offered through FEMA, is a proactive grant to help communities establish resiliency and sustainability. We need to continue to educate homeowners on ways to naturally protect their properties and actions that can be taken to benefit the long-term improvements of the lagoon, and we should continue to work with various agencies and municipalities to continue adaptive management and planning for the long-term success of this area. And then with that, I will take any questions that you have.
Any questions, Molly? Oh, come on, you're on a roll.
Okay, well, just going back, going back to the slide of the Jones Pier, living shoreline, you know, the key thing there is that row of rocks offshore there that serves as a wavebreaker. So I think any kind of projects we need to do like that, we need to have DEP, you know, buy in, that's a necessary component to help stabilize that shoreline, so, so I'm glad to see that, that, that should work in and fill in pretty good. There you go.
All right, now it's consistent.
Molly, thanks, this, this, this is good stuff. I mean, it's, I think it's a lot of what we know, you know, now we need to start doing somehow, and that's, that's, that's always the hard part of, of how to fund these things and how to do it, but it, it's just imperative that we, that we react on, on the lagoon, this natural resource, and get the help from, you know, from the national, from the state and the feds and, and that stuff as we, as we need to. I just think it's so important that, that Indian River County is part of the solution, and we're not part of the problem, and we can't factor in or worry about really what St. Lucie Brevard and Martin or all them doing, because it's so dynamic, the lagoon is so dynamic, it's, 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 it's dynamic in different areas, just in Indian River County alone, much less from county to county. I mean, you know, you hear a lot about the Banana River and all that sort of stuff, that is just totally different than what we have down here. It's just, it's just, it's just so much different, so it's just to, to make sure that we're concentrating and doing the things that we can do, and that we're just preserving this for the, for the future, because if this thing goes, goes bad or goes south, then, you know, then we're just doomed as a county, you know, environmentally and economically, too, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to add that, that I'm glad you highlighted the Jones Pier and the Lost Tree Island Projects. I, I really love those projects and, and what they are doing and will be doing. And then just to add, you know, resiliency and sustainability, I'm very happy is included in the research and will be included moving forward, because that's really how we're going to prevent backsliding to where we are today. You know, the, the lagoon plan and, and what comes out of that is to help address the current problems. The resiliency and sustainability part will help us from getting back to where we are. That being said, I know there's a lot of talk on the state and national level dealing with resiliency, particularly in the Florida area and along our coastal communities, so having this included in the plan should help us take advantage of some of those funding sources and grant dollars, because having it mentioned somewhere just puts us ahead of other communities. So I look forward to seeing, as we move forward, the more research in that area, because that really, in my opinion, is, is the key to how we continue in the future, and looking at our growth patterns and how we can create sustainable and resilient communities and don't do further damage because of the way we've always done things, you know, that, that doesn't always work. So, thank you for that.
And thank you again for this information. We will have to change the way we do things. I mean, that, it's going to have to happen. Almost every week here, you know, we vote on different development projects. We really need that vision project to happen so that we can decide as a county, and including our citizenry, where we're going with all of this, because development, really careful development, is going to be the key. I mean, we can remove the muck, it'll be right back, so you have to be really careful going forward, and we will have to change. We will have to change the way we do things. I'm hoping that that visioning project will help us to make good decisions in that regard, but thank you for this information, this, this is really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly. And yes, the visiting project is already started because of all of your fine work. We see tremendous staff here that is working on this on a daily basis, but it's important for the public to know how much work is being done internally as we move forward, so thank you. Commissioners, we don't need a motion on this?
We're slides, I promise, I'm almost done.
You said you were done. You said this is the last slide. You've already committed.
Sum it all up and give us the big.
Oh, okay.
Send it on its way.
I apologize.
No, that's okay. So just real quickly, for update four, which will be the last update within this research and review phase, we're going to cover marinas and boat ramps, part two, septic systems, stormwater, sustainability and resiliency, part two, and then water consumption. And once again, any comments or questions about the presentation can be sent to coastal@ircgov.com, and then, now I'm done, now you can.
Now the fireworks.
Are you sure?
I'm done, I'm sure.
You're going to commit now?
I'm committed to it.
Okay.
It does look like Section Four, though, is going to be a lot of heavy information, so I, I see how you teed it up, but.
There's a pencil and a half a day for that one.
Yeah, right, just put it aside now.
As it should, and you have someone, you don't have anyone on, okay. All right, well, now commissioners.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you, Molly.
Great job, everybody.
We don't need to vote on, but we have continued consensus to have staff forge on.
Most definitely.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the award of bid number 2021018, which is the construction of 66th Avenue roadway widening, 49th Street to 69th Street, Indian River County, 1505 FDOT FM, 436379-1-54-01, and 436379-1-54-02. Good morning.
Commissioners, Rich Spierke, Indian River County Public Works Director. So I have a 25 PowerPoint, a 25-slide PowerPoint presentation for you on this subject.
Bring it on.
Here we go. All right.
I just have a PowerPoint.
Is that a motion I heard? No.
All right, so what we have before you today is the bid award for 66th Avenue from 49th Street all the way up to 69th Street. I know Commissioner O'Brien has been awaiting this for a long time, so with that, we had a bid opening for 66th Avenue on February 24th, 2021, and we had seven bidders. The first four bidders were within $1 million, and the first two bidders were within $140,000. Very tight bid. Everybody got out their pencils and sharpened them up, and we were really, we were really surprised at the, at the closeness of all the bids. So we looked at all the bids, we did a complete analysis of the, of the bids, we checked all the math and whatnot, and we also talked to DOT. The Haley Engineering was considered to be the lowest responsible and responsive bidder for the project, with a bid totaling $32,728,137. And it was almost, it was almost $4 million below the engineer's cost estimate. The funding for the project is a multitude of funding. We've got almost $13 million from DOT through several grants that we have with them, and the county has optional sales taxes budgeted for this project, for the remainder of the Staff recommends that the board approve, award, approve award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Haley Engineering Contract, Constructors, or Contractors, excuse me, for $32,728,137.85. Staff further recommends the board approve the sample agreement and authorize the chair to execute said agreement after review and approval of both the agreement and the required public construction bond by the county attorney as to form in legal sufficiency and the receipt and approval of the required insurance by risk manager. Can I answer any questions you want?
No slides?
Rich, the fact we're going out to bid, does that tell me we're done with right-of-way acquisition on this section?
On the main line, yes. We're still, we're still working on. That's what I informed you before.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move staff recommendation.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman O'Brien, seconded by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? Anybody else want to bring anything forward? Anybody on the internet? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Next item on the agenda is the County Attorney Matters, which is the Construction Board Adjustment of an Appeals Member Appointment. Counselor?
Thank you very much, and as Jason just warned me, don't, don't mess this up. So basically, we have a vacancy on the construction, on the Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals. It's the plumbing contractor vacancy. We've actually received an application, which is great, it's been vacant for quite a while, but we've had that position posted, and now luckily we've got an applicant. Basically, we've presented that applicant for the board for consideration. Would, the county attorney's office would simply recommend that the board consider the applicant and the application and the materials, and decide whether to fill the vacancy on the board. And with that, I turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, I'll be happy to move acceptance of Mr. Franklin Jandrew's application to the Construction Board of Appeals.
And I'll second it.
That's a motion by Commissioner Adams, seconded by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion? The applicant is not here. Customarily, we would invite the applicant up, but in absentia, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and congratulations to our applicant. As far as appointments, I just, there's nothing else on the agenda. I just wanted to thank the governor for moving forward with the Find appointment across the board independently and unilaterally, to ensure that we have the best in staffing. I know that the Find has been short a few members for several years, and it's now very important that we have full board as we're moving forward, as we found out with the, the presentation on our recovery for the lagoon. Find is critical, but I just want everybody to know that at no time will we imperiled from life, from Find's support, but it's now to have, good to have a full board. So thank you, governor. With that, meeting adjourned.